Welcome, everyone. I now call the May 14th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we’ll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please stay here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz. Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt.
Here.
Councilmember Manke.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alkabrah.
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Zornz, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I’d like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we’ll move to public engagement opportunities. We have the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project open house on Wednesday, May 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Lytle House at the Park at Bothell Landing. Refreshments and childcare will be available. We have the Bothell Police Department Community Advisory Committee open for applications. You can apply by May 15th at 5:00 p.m. The BPCAC is seeking applications for additional members. If you live, work, or volunteer in Bothell, you’re encouraged to learn more and apply. And we have the Spring Waste Mobile. New dates, May 17th through 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at UDA Bothell Campus at 18115 Campus Way Northeast. You can drop off a wide variety of household hazardous waste products for easy, safe, and free disposal. All right. Next up, we have some proclamations. First up is Safe Boating and Paddling Week. Whereas the City of Bothell encompasses the Sammamish River and other waterways, and whereas many Bothell residents of all ages engage in recreational boating and paddling, and whereas the vast majority of serious boating and paddling accidents are caused by a lack of training, human error, or poor judgment, and whereas with the surge of Americans engaging in paddling activities since 2020, many without any training, paddling fatalities now constitute more than 25% of all boating fatalities nationwide, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lost their lives by drowning each year would have been alive today had they worn their life jackets, and whereas the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks, now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 18th through 24th, 2024, as Safe Boating and Paddling Week in the City of Bothell, and encourage all community members to learn about and practice safe boating. And the guys with the uniforms are always so prepared. They’re not sitting waiting there, they’re like here. Dale?
Perfect. I reside at 9218 Northeast 24th Place here in Bothell. I’m the District Captain for the Northern Area of District 13, which is the U.S. Coast Guard’s coverage of the four Northwest States. My role is to support the leadership of the units around Puget Sound from Bellingham to Olympia and back up the Peninsula, Geek Harbor, all the way to Port Angeles. The Auxiliary is a volunteer, uniformed branch of the Coast Guard. The Coast Guard very much appreciates the City of Bothell’s efforts to promote recreational boating safety and to encourage everyone on the water to wear a life jacket. My connection with the Coast Guard Auxiliary started here in Bothell at the Lytle House some seven years ago, when I was able to take their boater ed class for my Washington boater’s card. Besides teaching the general public about boating safety, we conduct vessel safety checks, provide on-the-water patrols, and offer a range of other services in support of all the Coast Guard missions, with the exception of law enforcement and military actions. I encourage residents of Bothell who are interested in boating to consider joining the Auxiliary to become both better boaters and to support the Coast Guard in keeping folks safe on the water. Thank you again, City of Bothell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Jewish American Heritage Month. I think that’s next. Whereas May is recognized annually as Jewish American Heritage Month to celebrate the enduring heritage of Jewish Americans whose values, culture, and contributions have shaped our community, and whereas the first Jewish immigrants arrived in America in 1654, fleeing oppression from other areas of the world and looking for a place where they could practice their faith and lead their lives freely and safely, and whereas Bothell has a thriving Jewish community of neighbors, friends, colleagues, and family members who continually make contributions to our society and culture in science, medicine, literature, the arts, sports, business, technology, government, and more, and whereas we celebrate the accomplishments of the Jewish community, we must also recognize the bigotry and violence that Jewish people have faced throughout history and that shamefully persists today, and where it is the responsibility of all Bothell community members to ensure that hate has no safe harbor here and to protect the sacred ideals of religious freedom, equality, dignity, and respect. Now, therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Bothell, and encourage all community members to join in this observance by building bridges of understanding and friendship across lines of difference, so that we can work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future. And I believe we have Rabbi Chaim Rivkin here to accept.
My name is Rabbi Chaim Rivkin, Rabbi of the local Jewish community, Chabad of Kirkland, serving the communities of the Northeast Side. I would like to thank Mayor Thompson, city council members, and everyone for being here tonight. In the last seven years since my family and myself moved to this neighborhood and founded a first Jewish community, this is what we call home. Since then, we have celebrated Jewish heritage together with so many residents, and the love and respect the Jewish community received from so many locals, and elected official was felt in every holiday celebration and events, and brought so much love to the community. At these times, when Jewish people, members of the Jewish community, are unfortunately being assaulted on the streets, our children in the school district are struggling with some really, really old-fashioned antisemitism, it is much more valued and appreciated to receive this proclamation tonight. I would like to personally thank the mayor for reaching out and initiating this proclamation. May God bless this assembly to continue being a shining light, fulfilling the commandment that God gave Noah and his children after the great flood, to make this universe, to make this world, a better place, a place of peace and safety for all mankind. God bless you. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. And to the mom whose child is making a little bit of noise, just know that children are welcome here, and children make noise, so wherever you want to be, I do not care if there is noise. All right. Next up, we have National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which it falls is National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of officers killed in the line of duty, and whereas there are approximately 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bothell Police Department, and whereas 136 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty in 2023, including one from Washington State, and whereas in 2023, a record 378 law enforcement officers across the United States were shot in the line of duty, and whereas since 1786, more than 25,000 law enforcement officers have been killed in the line of duty, including 319 officers from Washington State, and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty is honored during the National Peace Officers Memorial on Wednesday, May 15th, and whereas both the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial and the Washington State Law Enforcement Memorial bear the name of our own officer, Jonathan Shoup, who died in the line of duty on July 13th, 2020 while heroically serving Bothell, and whereas we recognize that every day, police officers risk their lives to help and protect others, now therefore I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2024 Police Week in the City of Bothell, and publicly acknowledge the brave service of law enforcement officers in Bothell and in communities across the nation. Chief, now I understand why you wore the dress clothes today. Saw you walking in, I was like, dang, chief looks good.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager Stanner. I stand before you today with a profound sense of pride and gratitude as we recognize Police Week. It is an immense honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the dedicated men and women of the Bothell Police Department. In a time when the challenges faced in law enforcement are multifaceted and demanding, this proclamation serves as a poignant reminder of the unwavering commitment demonstrated by our officers and police staff each day. Police Week is not only a time for us to reflect on the sacrifice made by those who have sworn to protect and serve, but is also an opportunity to celebrate the profound impact that law enforcement has on the lives of residents in our community. Our officers stand as guardians of justice, working tirelessly to protect the vulnerable from harm, uphold the Constitution, and ensure that Bothell remains a safe and vibrant place to live, work, and raise a family. As Chief of Police, I am proud of the work that our officers do day in and day out. They face challenges with courage, compassion, and integrity, embodying the values of service and sacrifice to define our profession. Whether it’s responding to emergencies, mediating disputes, or engaging with community members, our officers approach each task with steadfast dedication to making a positive difference in the lives of those they serve. Yet, even as we celebrate these achievements of our department, we must also acknowledge the ongoing need for collaboration and dialogue between law enforcement and the community we serve. Building trust and understanding is an ongoing process, one that requires open communication, empathy, and a willingness to listen and learn from each other. It is our goal that by working together, we can create a safe, more inclusive community where everyone feels respected, protected, and valued. In closing, I would like to express my deepest gratitude for this proclamation, which serves as a testament to the hard work and dedication of our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and to the rest of the officers here tonight. We appreciate you.
And Mayor, if you’d be willing, if council is interested with three proclamations tonight, if you wouldn’t mind taking a break for some photo opportunities, I think that some of the recipients would love to get a picture.
Absolutely. I don’t remember the question, so I don’t want to answer this wrong, but we would be happy to do that. I will avoid the yes or no. City Attorney, should we call for a break with a time, or should we just take a moment since we’ll be here the whole time? Perfect. We’ll just take a moment. All right. Moving on to public comment. The City has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight’s meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mary Thompson. Before I begin, public comments shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker’s comments being suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and then at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. We received two written comments, one from Mary Evans regarding the Park at Bothell Landing design options, and another one regarding the Park at Bothell Landing design options from Susan Gardner. And we have one person online that wishes to speak, and that is Tamara Erickson, and I am promoting her right now, so give me just one moment. Tamara, go ahead. When you’re ready, you’ll have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Tamara Erickson. I live in Lake Forest Park, and I’m just commenting on the proclamation for Jewish Heritage Month. I am Jewish. I am an active partner in the Kavina congregation, and I also share the rabbi’s concern, the rise in antisemitism. However, I think it is important to note that there is a significant amount of, you know, people who will often, you know, use antisemitism or say that something is antisemitic to censor speech and silence legitimate criticism of those who promote equal rights And that’s it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? If you would go to the podium and state your name, you’ll have three minutes. Thank you.
No, I had to turn it on. My name is Sue Keeney. I live in Bothell, and I just found out about the three conceptual plans for the Park at Bothell Landing. Somebody called me this morning, so I got out of the garden and cleaned up a little bit. I just would like to know how you are notifying people of this, because I didn’t know anything about it, and I’ve been really involved in the park since the conception of it, and was president of the museum for 44 years, so I’m concerned about some of the issues in the park. So that’s my only question, is how do you notify people? Because I was not notified, and I’d like to get it on a list for future. I know that today is a study session. I understand that, but in the future, is there an answer to that? Get it later?
Mayor, we’ll have a member of the park staff follow up.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That’s all I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? That’s all I have. Mayor Thompson.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right. Next up is the City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. It’s a beautiful Tuesday night, so we’re getting to that time of year where, when we look outside, it looks like maybe a place we’d want to be. I have a couple of brief updates, and then we do have one staff report for you this evening. First staff update, I just want to help reemphasize word that we’ve been getting out there, but again, we’ve been talking about the comprehensive plan quite a bit over the last year and a half, and we’re at a pretty significant milestone, thankful for the community events and those 100 or so people who turned out. But we also want to just reiterate that the draft plan, as well as the draft environmental impact statement, are online right now on EngageBothell.com, and the comment period closes this Friday at 5:00. It’s a large document and might feel daunting to people as they click on the link, but the good news is it’s only the first link provides you the entire comprehensive plan. There’s also each section available, so I know some, when I’ve talked to the Chamber of Commerce, for example, I like to highlight that there’s the economic development section, that sort of thing, so people can pick and choose. They do not have to comment on all hundreds of pages. They can pick the sections that they’re interested in. So I’d encourage people, again, to go out to EngageBothell.com. If they are not, it’s not required to submit comments through EngageBothell. They are also able to submit comments to EISImagineBothell@bothellwa.gov. We’re also accepting written comments in the mail sent to the city with the attention of Jason Greenspan, our community development director. I’ll do a quick little add-on to that, too, because the good news is, and this is shifting gears away from that, but just want to also point out that we do have our new community development deputy director in the audience tonight. So Christian Geis is here. Christian joined the city about two weeks ago, so we’re really grateful to have him and his leadership supporting us, and it’s a good opportunity to get to know the community as we start buttoning up the draft comprehensive plan that’s going to really set a direction for the next 10 years. So Christian, welcome. And then my other note I just wanted to make before kicking off the staff report is, it’s even better because he’s not in the room right now, but with Police Week, we are very thankful for our police officers that are out in the field, and that extends to our non-commissioned support staff, too, that really make everything work, but it also includes our leadership. So just want to extend a thanks to our Chief, Chief Superlook, and also to our Deputy Chief, Beard, and we’re so thankful they’re here. I think they set a tone that makes Police Week a celebration, so we’re thankful. With that, I’m going to invite up Kristy Cox, who is our Surface Water Program Coordinator, and she’ll be sharing an update with council about some of the educational opportunities that are coming up, and hopefully that we get the attention of some community members, too, who might want to come learn more. So Kristy, welcome, and I’ll turn it over to you.
Thank you for that introduction, City Manager Stanner. Let me get ready to share my screen here. One more click. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Excuse me. My name is Kristy Cox, and I’m one of the Surface Water Program Coordinators in the Public Works Department. I’m here tonight to provide you with an overview of the Surface Water Education Programs that the City of Bothell offers. As tonight is a staff briefing, no council action is recommended this evening. Tonight, I am going to start by explaining what stormwater runoff is and why it can be a problem. Then I’ll briefly describe the elements of our Surface Water Education Programs. Next, I’ll talk about our regional participation, and then I will wrap up by answering any questions you may have. So with that, I’ll start by describing what stormwater runoff is and why we have these education programs. So stormwater runoff is rain that falls on streets, parking areas, rooftops, or other hard surfaces, and flows into storm drains and bodies of water instead of soaking into the ground. This is especially important because when rain picks up pollution along its path to a storm drain, that pollution gets carried to the nearest body of water without any treatment. This is why our education programs focus on ways to prevent pollution to help protect water quality. So the first program I’ll mention is our Natural Yard Care Program, which has been the city’s behavior change program for a number of years. In the past, we have worked with TILF Alliance to provide annual classes and workshops on a variety of yard care topics, both online and in person, and at the end of each year, TILF Alliance prepared an evaluation to help us measure the effectiveness of these programs. If the workshops were offered online, we recorded them, and they are available on YouTube and on our website to use as a resource. We also have a number of regional natural yard care resources, both online and in print in a variety of languages. Next, it’s everyone’s favorite topic, pet waste. Our pet waste program includes four main elements to encourage the behavior of picking up after your dog. We offer signs for public spaces as well as for residential properties by request to remind people to pick up pet waste. We offer pet waste pledges to fill out online or on paper, which is basically a pledge to pick up after your dog on every walk. Along with the pledge, an optional incentive is a leash attachment that’s designed to hold a full bag of pet waste away from your hand until you can get to a trash can to dispose of it. Each of our city parks has at least one pet waste station in it. Funding for the stations and bags come from Public Works, while our parks’ staff maintains and refills the stations. Lastly, we provide educational games that focus on teaching people where to dispose of pet waste. The goal is for people to put pet waste in the trash, not in a compost pile or organic bin, and not left on the ground. We also provide “we scoop” stickers for people to put on their trash cans as a reminder that pet waste belongs in the trash. To prevent vehicle-related pollution, we focus on several areas. First, we encourage using a commercial car wash when possible, because it captures the dirty wash water and sends it to the sanitary sewer system rather than to a storm drainage system. That being said, we understand that commercial car washes don’t work for all vehicles, so if you are going to wash your vehicle at home, the goal is to avoid letting the suds and dirty water run into the streets. You can accomplish this by washing your vehicle over grass, or by creating a berm to divert the water to a landscaped area where it can then soak into the ground. Next, we promote checking for and fixing vehicle leaks through our Regional Don’t Drip and Drive Campaign. This is a program that teaches drivers how to check for leaks, identify potential sources, and connect with local mechanics if repairs are needed. It’s far better to fix a leak when it’s small rather than waiting until it becomes a larger and more expensive problem. The most recent vehicle-related behavior that we’re focused on is proper tire inflation. The Regional Don’t Wait to Inflate Campaign encourages drivers to check the air pressure in their tires monthly and add air if needed. Doing this helps increase vehicle safety, handling, and fuel efficiency, and it helps your tires last longer and creates less tire particle pollution as your tires naturally wear down. Bothell still has about 2,000 homes that are on septic systems, so for those residents, our septic system care program provides information about how your system works, how to maintain it, how to identify warning signs that something might not be working right, and how to extend the life of your septic system. We have partnered with our conservation districts to offer online webinars with one of the region’s leading septic specialists, and each year, the classes have been well-attended and received very positive feedback. To decrease the financial cost associated with septic maintenance, both King and Snohomish Counties offer rebates to qualifying residents who complete recommended maintenance to keep their systems functioning as designed. Our spill hotline is a 24-hour phone number for anyone to call us to notify us of a spill that has either reached a storm drain or a body of water, or that has the potential to do so. This program involves teaching residents and businesses how to identify spills and how to notify us right away. The sooner we know about a spill, the more quickly we can respond to prevent or mitigate any damage to our stormwater system and to local streams and rivers. Our Source Control Program focuses on teaching businesses the best practices for preventing spills, and it provides a free spill kit and training about what to do if a spill does occur at the workplace. Our next program focuses on rainwater harvesting, which is allowed and encouraged here in Washington State. That top picture shows a rain garden, which is a shallow, bowl-shaped garden that collects runoff from your roof and directs it into the landscape so it stays on your property. Rain gardens tend to work best with native plants that can tolerate both standing water during the rainy season and dry conditions during the summer. We also work with our conservation districts to offer discounted rain barrels to collect water from your gutter system. We’ve held a few do-it-yourself rain barrel building workshops. We’re hoping to offer another one this fall, and we’ve also hosted several rain barrel painting events so that people can give their rain barrels a little more personality. For youth education, we work with an organization called Nature Vision to provide stormwater programs that meet state standards. Through our sponsorship, these programs are free for K-12 Bothell schools to offer to their students. The picture on top is called an Enviroscape Model, and this is where students learn how a little pollution here and there can turn into quite a mess when you add water or rain. We also focus on youth audiences at outreach events by offering information, games, and hands-on activities that are geared towards kids. The picture on the bottom shows a salmon bracelet craft activity where kids learn about different parts of the salmon lifecycle while putting their bracelet together. We promote watershed stewardship by partnering with local nonprofit organizations that are focused on habitat preservation and restoration, like Whale Scout and Friends of North Creek Forest. The picture on the top was from our Earth Day Celebration with Whale Scout just a few weeks ago, and it shows a very dedicated group of volunteers removing invasive blackberry near the Sammamish River. Another way that we encourage stewardship is through the Regional Adopt a Drain Program, which I know several of our council members are part of. Thank you. This is both a pollution prevention and a flood prevention program. This is both a pollution prevention and a flood prevention program where residents can adopt their neighborhood storm drain and commit to making sure the surrounding area stays clean and clear so that pollution stays out and rain has somewhere to go. Regionally, the city participates in several annual campaigns. We just wrapped up our Earth Month Celebration, as you saw on the previous slide. Last week, we finished up the Steelhead Migration Race called Survive the Sound. Unfortunately, our spokesperson Hank did not survive this time. In June, we will celebrate Pollinator Week. In fall, we'll join surrounding cities to start to look for Chinook, Sakai, and Koho during King County's Salmon Season Program. And September is going to be a very busy month as we celebrate Puget Sound Starts Here Month, Pollution Prevention Week, and Septic Smart Week. So in closing, I'd like to part with the message, only rain down the storm drain, and I want to thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, Karsten. I know you've got something.
Thank you for the presentation, Kristi. You know, this is a very close-to-my-heart realm of the city. So thank you for all the work that you do, too. You didn't really touch on all the regional collaborations and efforts that you and the connections that you make, but the City of Bothell is really a leader, and it's because of your work and our Surface Waters team.
Thank you.
So thank you. I also wanted to just ask a little bit more about the Natural Lawn Care Program because that was our behavior change under the permit. And so what were some of the findings that maybe popped out to you during the evaluation of that program?
Over the course of the years, I believe it started in 2013 or 14 when we collaborated with Snohomish County and King County to provide programs. What we found was the most receptive audience were new homeowners. So for a few, I think it was once during last permit cycle and once during this, we focused on anyone who had purchased a home in Bothell within the past three years and found that many of them were new to having a yard. We're looking for direction on what can I do that's going to be simple to maintain, so they were very receptive. One surprising thing we learned was when we focused several years of the program on streamside landowners, there was not much participation. We would conduct follow-up surveys three, six, and 12 months after each workshop to see, did you adopt any of these things you learned? Are you still doing them? Not a lot of adoption, not a lot of participation. So those were some interesting findings.
Thanks, yeah.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thanks for being here and thanks for the presentation. It's good to see you. And usually, I run into you at a park, at a planting event. So it's good to see you in this context. One question I had, you mentioned the rain gardens, and I didn't hear if you also, and maybe this is not the right part of the city, but isn't there like a rain garden mentorship program of some kind that community? I don't know how it works, but could you, if you know what I'm talking about, could you explain it, please?
I might know what you're talking about. There's a program called 12,000 Rain Gardens, which is a collection of rain gardens all over the Puget Sound. You can go on there, and it will show you residents who have said, yes, I've installed a rain garden, so if you want to actually see them, you can. In the past, what we've done is partner with King and Snohomish Conservation District. Years ago, we did a cluster of four residential rain gardens up by Bothell High School. Last I checked, three of them were still in good shape. The other, I think, changed ownership. But we do tend to sort of lean on our conservation districts if someone is interested in installing a rain garden because they have the technical expertise. And as part of our scope of work with them, they're willing to help people know, okay, is this going to work for your site? And also, here are the plants that are going to work here.
Great, yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for describing that. And yeah, I've seen a couple of them over by Bothell High. And if for, you know, anybody in the community who is interested, they would just contact the conservation district for their county? Is that correct?
They can contact me. What we tend to do, because Snohomish Conservation District works with all of Bothell on behalf of King Conservation District, it's kind of cool that we're in two counties because we get the benefit of both conservation districts. And they're really the ones that have the ability to send people out to come assess your property. So if someone wants to, they can just contact me directly, and I'll put them in touch with the right person.
Great, thank you.
I'll just give one shout-out to lawn removal. I did mine three or four years ago and have not looked back. Have some raised beds, and it is absolutely delightful to not have to worry about that.
My backyard's full of containers and mulch, and that's it.
Nice. We probably have similar things happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anything else? Cool. Next up is council committee reports, community reports, and conversations.
Hello.
Councilmember Kurt.
Thank you. So this is relatively old now because we didn't do council committee reports last week. But on the first of the month, we had Law Day here at the City Hall, and that was a really, was a really exciting thing for kids from the local high schools and I think even a couple of middle schools that came through, three groups. And I wanted to shout out Gabby and Christine from the city for putting together an activity. Mayor Thompson was with me, and the kids were able to learn a little bit about the legislative process here at the city. And they also visited the court, and there were horses and a mini-horse out on the street that they got to learn about, too. So that was really fun. I think that they asked really good questions, that I was kind of surprised that they were so in tune. And the biggest takeaway that I heard from them was that they want sidewalks, which, you know, I think many share that same opinion. Yeah, and then I also attended K-4C meeting earlier in the month as well. At the meeting, we discussed a couple of cities in the collaboration are engaging in East Side Climate Partners, which some of you may have seen some news about, especially in Bellevue and Redmond. And so I have a little bit more information about the partnership and kind of what they do, if you're interested in that. I can forward along some notes, but in general, I think it's kind of an interesting opportunity, especially as some cities have staff that are more focused on climate or forestry initiatives that certain cities have. I think we could probably look into, you know, resources that we could pool. So that's another opportunity. And that's it from me.
Councilmember Aldrich.
I have updates, starting with the East Side Transportation Partnership. We met on May 10, and we started out by breaking into small groups to talk about how cities on the east side are kind of reacting to and being affected by light rail. And then Representative Ramos from the legislature gave us a post-legislative session update on transportation funding. Later in the day, I attended the Municipal Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so the MSWAC. And one of the things that's coming out of that is there's going to be a draft letter that cities within that advisory council can send to the county council regarding rate increases for 2025. Basically, there's been a significant effort to smooth rate increases over several years instead of seeing spikes in rate increases in one year. The committee also reviewed waste acceptance rules for landfills regarding special items like mattresses, biomedical waste. And one thing I learned is that new rules are needed to draft for marijuana waste. That isn't something that we've figured out before. Now that it's legal, figuring out how to properly dispose of waste is part of that. And we also heard an update on the county's debris management plan. Last update from me is that today at lunchtime, NUSA held an Affordable Housing 101 Lunch and Learn. And I was really glad to see that 75 participants were present across North King County cities. They shared an Affordable Housing 101 glossary, which is available from NUSA, and that is helping define just kind of the complex landscape of affordable housing for members of the community to help it be more accessible. When they hear, you know, something that is a complicated acronym, you know, it's a resource to find out what that really means and some of the specific terms and everything. Jesse Simpson from HDC, so the Housing Development Consortium, presented an overview of housing costs, including income levels and housing targets across North King County to kind of highlight this is why housing is needed and this is where housing is expected. So each North King County city also presented an overview of affordable housing efforts in their city, including Christian, our new deputy director of community development, was there, and he presented for Bothell. And so I got an early introduction. So thanks for doing that today. And those are my updates, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other updates, our next agenda bill is Agenda Bill 24075. It is a study session for the Park at Bothell Landing Conceptual Design Alternatives. While we get from here to there, let's take-
Mayor, I wanted to ask you if we would be doing a projected agenda discussion?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Forget I said all of that. Next up is projected agenda discussion, and I'll just kick it directly over to you.
And I do have an item. One thing that has come to my attention from our protocol manual is that we don't have protocols for council members who serve on state and national committees, especially regarding travel. Many of these committees, especially for like the National League of Cities, have not just one in-person required meeting, but multiple in a year. And I did not know that until I was on one of them. And I also think that, I think participating in National League of Cities is kind of new to us as a city, so we're kind of learning how to navigate that. And I very much want my colleagues on council to have the opportunity to participate in national committees, state committees. And so I'm not just doing this for me, although it is a budget request. It is also a request that we include something in the protocol manual that outlines council participation in national and state committees and how to manage travel plans related to that. One thing I will say is that we, there's actually a return on investment for these committees because when the mayor and I went to National League of Cities in DC a couple months ago, we ended up with $70,000 in grants. So we did not spend $70,000 to get there, that's for sure. And that means that we, there was actually a return on our investment for attending. And I think that it's a great opportunity for our community to be involved in national level conversations, to learn about federal funding available to us. And so I'd really very much like to see something in the protocol manual about that. So that is my proposal.
Would anybody like to add to that or have any questions or comments on it? Councilmember Manki.
Supportive of the discussion.
Also supportive. I think it's worth looking at. I think that's not an opportunity that most of us had probably thought of before Councilmember Aldrich raised this, so that'd be really good to talk about.
And I'll make four on that. I'd like to take a look at that and explore it.
Great. Thank you, council. So yes, per projected agenda items, that means we do have, we'll bring something back. I will thank Councilmember Aldrich of, we did discuss this ahead of time. And in doing some research of saying, sometimes we can learn practices from our neighbors, there's not a great example of how this is handled. And so I do think this is a good one of where we can bring back the conversation. There will be a light touch in terms of what staff wraps around it, other than some context around probably budget. But ultimately, this will be one where council gets to discuss, how do you want to operate? And we'll get that added to the protocol manual. So we'll look for scheduling opportunity and bring that back in an upcoming meeting.
Anybody else? Picked a really bad week to just blow right past that, didn't I?
Normally, it doesn't happen.
All right. Now, we will move on to study sessions. We are going to take seven minutes. It's 6:48. We'll be back at 6:55 down there. All right, next up is Agenda Bill 24075, Park at Bothell Landing Conceptual Design Alternatives. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is the first of two study sessions that we have scheduled for this evening. And yeah, it's very exciting work. I wanted to just point back to you before we turn over for the presentation, just to frame this as well, is that you'll recall your own vision. But in the section about a joyful, hold on a second. I'm on the wrong tab, my goodness. I do. I have the whole thing. A joyful and healthy way of life. What we, what you talk about is that celebration is a way of life in Bothell and that we experience community daily in spaces that we have intentionally created, both indoors and outdoors, as we relax, recreate, and welcome new community members. Bothellites of all ages celebrate together in a variety of spaces, activities, amenities, and events from our neighborhood streets where children play to seeking solitude in nature or playing in parks and community centers. People from all over the region join residents in Bothell for arts and culture at our performing arts facilities and cultural events. Through holistic planning, everyone in Bothell experiences opportunities for adventure, joy, and good health. And then one of the priorities, the three-year priorities that the council put was an aggressive challenge for staff, which was to begin construction of the remodeled Park at Bothell Landing within three years, which we've been upfront since beginning, is that construction, probably not. But what we are doing is looking to accelerate this, to move it as quickly as possible and get it as close to reality as we can. And thank you to the council for also then investing in that of providing some funding through our American Rescue Plan Act funds to accelerate the planning. So we're seeing that tonight. So you're starting to see some of that work come back, and it's very exciting, and we saw a long ways to go. So we'll balance that polarity. To tell us more about it tonight is our Parks Planning and Development Manager, Aaron Milner. And he'll be kicking off the presentation and then introducing our consultants from Site Workshop to present more information about the three conceptual designs. And I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, City Manager Stannert. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. We're here tonight. The purpose of tonight is to discuss the Park at Bothell Landing Conceptual Design Project. We're going to be informing the council and seeking feedback on the project. So with us here today, we have Vanita Cityu and Ryan Storkman from Site Workshop Landscape Architecture. They'll be walking you through some of the initial site analysis work we've done, our community engagement process to date. They'll be presenting to you three conceptual designs, alternative designs for the project, and then also walking you through our next steps as we work to synthesize these three designs into one preferred concept as a basis for design moving forward. So after this presentation, we'll be seeking any comment from the council on the project as a whole, as well as the design approaches that you'll see within the three concepts here, and particularly the elements within, that are depicted in each of these three designs and the activities that are a result of those design elements. So as we work to understand our community's vision for this important park, we'll be kind of, we'll be combining these elements into one conceptual design that will likely look a lot different than any of these three designs that will be before you today. So what we want to hear from you today is what you like about these, each of these designs, and maybe what you don't like about each of these designs. So we went through a similar exercise with our Parks Board last Thursday, and after this brief presentation by our consultant team here, I'll walk you through some of the high-level feedback we received from Parks Board, and then we'll have a, hopefully a robust discussion on the Park at Bothell Landing. So with that, I'll introduce to you Vanita and Ryan, who will walk you through next steps.
I'm going to move us through the front end of this as quickly as I can so we can get to the fun stuff, which is options one, two, and three. But we want you to know where, what shaped these ideas. And first of all, it was understanding the history of the 2010 master plan, and then we developed a strategy- And then we developed a strategy for collecting the current information. And we'll share sort of a high-level schedule and site analysis and public engagement. And then we'll get into the concept plan and ask for your feedback. So just want you to understand the process here. We're about midway through this concept design and master plan update. We broke it into three different parts, learn, explore, and decide. We've, the green diamonds are public open house events that happened two already and two, two more coming. The orange bars that are, are the online surveys, so one has happened December through February. And that, that gave us the information for these three concepts. And we're, we're now here where we are looking at those three concepts. And there, there will be two more online surveys and two more public open houses, as well as stakeholder events, or stakeholder engagement with interests like, like the History Museum folks and What's Up paddle boarding and other, other interests. So, so those are sort of the, the engagement and overall project approach. So we're, we're studying all of the, these different program elements that are bullet pointed there in the top left. We'll, we'll talk about those more specifically. But then a big part of this refresh of the master plan is a strong engagement plan to collect all the public feedback we can. We, we had, and then a part of that is a survey, a public survey, as we talked about, online survey. And then part of that is these open house events that we'll talk about in just a moment. And then we take all that information, we, we try to understand it and synthesize it into these, these options. So just stepping back for a moment, we, we see that Bothell, the Park at Bothell Landing is, is that area in solid outline. And then we have the, the green space to the southwest. And, and also looking around at the context of this site, it's really an interface of these, these green spaces and these green corridors of the Burke-Gilman Trail with the downtown Bothell. And so I think that really positions it as a, and an interface for that, for those kinds of program and events and, but it's also a place people have identified as their experience in nature. So the study area is this, this solid outline, as I mentioned. And I just wanted to have a little more detailed aerial view here. And again, I think the, the important thing here is it's this fairly urban context, but it's framed by these, this, the, the Samamish River and these green spaces to the south and to the west. This is a site analysis, just some of the important things we're considering as we think about this site. The elevation change from the, the state route down to the water's edge is about 20 feet. And then we have this historic district, which is, has, we've gotten a lot of positive public feedback about. And it's, it's a big part of the identity of Bothell and, and the Park at Bothell Landing. We're considering parking and lawn and all of the, sort of the existing conditions as we, we make proposals for options one, two, and three. We're also understanding that there are wetlands and there is a, a river and its critical areas and those setbacks and what kinds of development constraints those will mean. We won't get into that in detail today, but it, we just want to share that those are considerations. So public engagement was, has consisted of two open houses and this, this first of three online surveys. We had a couple of great events despite the rain at the park. And these are some of the key takeaways. And they're sort of rephrased on the next slide, so we'll just jump to that. And, and these are sort, the synthesis of those events and survey is these nine points. So Nate, people, as I mentioned earlier, people really see this as a place for nature experiences. It's also a place for public events, and there were a lot of really fond memories of before the pandemic, the, the big public events that happened here, the Fourth of July, pancake breakfast and things like that. Play and intergenerational activities. People talked about bringing their, their grandkids here to play on the playground. And people were really interested in more picnic and amenities and seating and gathering spaces. People also use this as a, a launch point for both bicycles, bicycle rides and river access. So just improved access both to the river and the trail system. People are interested in new features like possibly a splash pad or fountain and, and also ways to reflect indigenous histories. And also curious about whether skate features like, or dog parks or some of these possibilities could fit into the context of this, this space. And then lastly, just overarching was improved access, pedestrian, bike, boat, vehicle. So improving access to this place and within this place. I'll hand it over to Anita.
Thanks, Ryan. So we've got three concepts and I'm going to pause on this page and just talk about some high-level things that we were considering as we developed this range of concepts. And, you know, as has already been said, we are not looking for a, let's go with option three, or let's go with option one. We, we wanted to explore a range of opportunities here. You know, we were tasked with taking the, the good work that happened in the master plan, but infusing that with current feedback from the community and people that, you know, make Bothell a special place. With that, you'll see a range of parking extent in each of these. With option one on the left has the smallest footprint. Option two in the middle has the largest amount of parking stalls. And then option three on the right comes somewhere in the middle. So looking at, well, what are the opportunities where we minimize parking and then what happens when you maximize it? Each of these suggests some thoughts on the access to the park. And option one puts out a bolder idea, and this is because this has been thrown out from the beginning, the idea that how can we get across 522 in a more safe way? So we were asked to explore the idea of a pedestrian bridge. I would say that I heard some chatter about how much do these concepts cost? I could tell you straight out that the pedestrian bridge is going to be your single largest cost item. It, but we're putting it out there to get feedback and really just see what, what is the value of doing something like that? And is that something you want to prioritize within your city? The middle option actually suggests some other ideas about maybe there are ways to improve the intersections. Now, either a pedestrian bridge or changes to the intersections obviously would need Washdod approval. These are not necessarily slam dunk ideas that we're putting out here. There would be a whole process of approvals as well as funding, but exploring those ideas to get feedback. All of them consider some, some core elements that were in the 2010 master plan, such as the, creating a special moment when you enter the park aligned with Bothell Way, a water feature, a gathering place, a new plaza, that we've, we've, you know, scaled it differently in these different options and explored different ways that can happen. The option one, Bothell's Playground, so each of these has a name to just kind of highlight the big idea. Bothell's Playground really goes at it with more active recreation, intergenerational, more facilities for youth. Option two, Bothell's Town Green thinks includes recreation in play, but really maximizes opportunity for events beyond what is possible in the amphitheater. And then option three, Bothell's Forest Grove. We did hear from a lot of people, as was mentioned, that they come to this park for a nature experience. So it looks at, well, what if we maximize the nature opportunities and really minimize, you know, minimizing, not that there aren't other recreation, but that it's not the, the focus. Can you flip to the next one? Great. So just looking a little more closely at option one here, Bothell's Playground includes, high-level includes a dog park, skate park, that potentially could also be a pump track type facility, but something that would target youth and, well, you know, people, doesn't necessarily just have to be teenagers, that could appeal to people of different ages as well. We've included two player areas with the thought that the play area near the skate park might target older kids. And the one closer to the existing kayak launch area could be for younger kids. We, in all of these ideas, we're looking at improving the launching to the river. There are, with the drop-off that you, when you enter, we've heard feedback that it is a little bit difficult to put your kayak or stand-up paddleboard into the water. So that, that is a, a given as a core element. And we're showing a new building associated with the launch that would support a facility for What's Up. So for a place where you can rent that is a permanent facility. They also are interested in a small amount of concessions with that, selling things like ice cream and drinks. And, you know, that building is scaled to also potentially have restrooms on one end, so it can be a multipurpose type of building. In the historic district, we're showing a gathering space or a courtyard that the buildings all affront onto. That gray dot is suggesting a home for a historic school bell that we are aware of. This option does suggest picking up and relocating the Beckstrom Cabin. We've heard comments or concerns about that. It was something we discussed, you know, at the beginning of this project. Well, these buildings were moved here. Would there be an opportunity, an improved opportunity if we actually considered picking up and shifting? So the idea here is that the other three buildings are not moving, the Beckstrom Cabin being the smallest, that seemed like an opportunity. It opens up the views to the lawn and the river and sets the buildings onto a, a place, a little historic court there. Proposing a covered stage at the amphitheater, as well as covering over the seating. We've heard some feedback about not just rain, but also sun. It's a very sunny spot and on the, our hotter days in the summer, it's definitely could be uncomfortable. So how can make, like maximize the opportunities within the amphitheater and the comfort? An event plaza with the water feature is, is the heart, the center of this, framed by a large picnic shelter on one side and on the bright side by a pavilion. The thought here with the pedestrian bridge concept is it could land on the roof of a pavilion. So you're taking advantage of the height of being up. Could be an opportunity for a roof terrace on that pavilion building and then building in an elevator, so you provide accessibility. On the other side, we know that parcel to the north is a city's parcel that has some future and potentially pedestrian bridge could be developed with, with a building that's developed on that side, if that's the decision that happens at some point. All right. Next one? I, I won't pause on this, but just some concept images, just to help visualize some of these amenities, water feature on the top, pump track. Oh, yeah.
What is cool about this is that, and others actually, in general, but specifically option one, is that it links, you can see there could be a continuation to the actual Bothell Bridge that we have that crosses the river. So it's like a continuation, versus today you have to take a detour, you know?
Yeah, that, that was something, when we were just, we were drawing, it's a flat plan, obviously, so you don't get the experience. But the idea that, yeah, you'd have this visual experience to look at the lovely existing bridge that you have. I would say also that in each of these, we've been thinking about how to bring people closer to the water. It's, it's a, you know, heavily vegetated edge, which is important for water quality and, but sometimes that means there's some places where you don't actually see the river that well, including within the amphitheater where it is heavily vegetated right now. So each of these did include some idea of a deck that gets right up to the water's edge. The previous one had one and this one shows one connected to the amphitheater. This one also suggests the idea that the boat launch shift and it's, it's coming down at an angle right of where the existing one is. And that allows, by doing it that way, to actually do it at an accessible slope, so it would be a ramp coming down to increase access within that launch. And then the existing launch could turn into more of a natural space and a place to get close to the water. This, the, the biggest differences within this concept is this idea of providing a large event, well, lawn. We've talked about it as a possible event lawn, but it also on every day would just be a great place to throw a frisbee or kick a soccer ball or fly a kite, the various things people like to do in grassy areas. And on the left side of it, we've proposed a pavilion-type building that could have a stage, but also just be a shelter for picnicking or seating or gathering. This, this concept does maximize parking, includes a parking lot on each end of the park. We have been talking that, you know, one of the challenges of the east gravel parking area is that it's right out only. So if there was the opportunity to get a signal there, signalization at that crossing, not only does that improve the pedestrian connection, but it also improves access in and out by vehicles, though we understand that, that that will be some convincing on the Washdod side to get that signal there. Include at the Bothell Way intersection actually suggested reducing the number of turn lanes. There's a lot of turn lanes at that intersection. And one way to just improve crossing is to actually narrow the intersection and shorten the crossing distance. Again, if that could get approved. All the other, you know, similar improved play area space, gathering area with water feature, little courtyard between the historic buildings. Flipped to the next one. And some precedent images here, you know, I would say, I'm sure you know this, precedents aren't exact, so we use them as inspiration, but not to be literal. Showing the example of the Hanger Building at Kenmore. It's, it's probably larger scale than what's appropriate for this park, but we share it because of its indoor/outdoor function and what a building can be with a small concession space inside, but the ability to use for different community events or rentals. And the upper middle photo is, it's at Volunteer Park in Seattle, but the idea of a stage onto a big lawn. And the final concept, option three, the, the big difference in this concept is we've taken that east half of the park where there's a large gravel lot and really developed that as a, a combination of nature space, but also places to picnic and mixing in sort of small nodes of activities that are more nature-oriented, lots of trees, lawn space adjacent to a pavilion community building. Again, Central Plaza and in this one, when you're looking, if you're on Bothell Way, looking towards the park, starting with a bigger move there, the idea of, of a pergola or structure of that sort, that would be this nice visual from the heart of Bothell to the river. Next one? And yeah, and just- And yeah, and just some images of the, the, these are all just trying to show how you, in sort of a nature oriented type of space, can integrate other types of amenities where you just feel more immersed in the nature experience. And that is a high level of all the concepts. Tried to get through that quickly, but we're, can answer any questions and clarify.
And real quickly, before we get to the questions, I do want to provide you a quick update on some of the feedback we received from the park board. And this is really high level. I'm not getting into too much detail here because we spent about an hour and a half talking about these three concepts. But in general, there is support to provide active amenities with the recognition that nature, the nature experience is valuable, but also the recognition that there is a lot of open space and passive use area just beyond the park and to the west of this active space that we're looking at for the Park of Bothell Landing. There's widespread support for elements that allow viewing and access to the river, that being the boat launches, bridges, beaches and viewing decks. There's a preference to prioritize and maximize developed park space over parking lot space. And this conversation was kind of in the context with the elements that would be included within the concept, with the recognition that, you know, rentable space such as multi-use, reservable picnic shelters or, or any other space, recreation space may require parking or there's an expectation that parking would be required and also to serve ADA, basic ADA accessibility and, and other, and boat launch load and unload. There's interest in exploring and pursuing options to improve the pedestrian crossing of State Route 522 as was discussed. There's a lot of discussion over the pedestrian bridge. And then also the hundred, the pedestrian bridge off of the 102nd Bridge, that's just to the east. That wasn't talked about too much in either of these designs, but there's some opportunity with upcoming bridge replacement project. And there's a desire for interactive water features that provides year-round visual interest, whether that be a sculpture or architectural feature and/or in-ground nozzles allowing for flexibility of use of the space. And there's a recognition that the current historical features are important and there's a desire to expand and include indigenous history. There's a desire to allow space and activity for teen population and elements that encourage multi-generational recreation. And there's general support for a larger multipurpose, purpose facility. And then also the parks board was really interested in encouraging bike transportation to the park and within the park and supporting bike infrastructure and amenities within. So those are kind of really the real general high overarching themes that we received from our parks board. So with that, we'll open it up to any comment or questions from the council.
I was going to jump in on the parking. There's so much parking near this park. I would love to see us focus on more ADA stalls onsite and then improving the connections to get across the highway so people can park. I mean downtown, there's always parking. There's a park and ride right there. There's the Siamish River Park around the corner, which is a pretty short walk to get to the Park at Bothell Landing, so that people who need to park close have abundant parking. And then we just highlight the so many other options that are there as well and make sure that the connections are easier. And whether that's a bridge or signal timing or who knows, but I would love to have us focus on, I love that park space over parking lot space. Like this is such a good chance to make, like I, option one sings to me, but I'm open to all of them, but it's such a good chance and I don't want it to be majority parking lot. So thank you.
I don't have to wait in study sessions, but I was not quick enough on the trigger to beat Councilmember Dodd, so.
I had feelings.
Yeah, I, I too have feelings. So basically two kind of big picture concepts I think are really important and then I have like a onesie twosie list. The first is really, who is this park for? Like who are we prioritizing? Like we kind of have to choose. And I think we should prioritize children's, our kids, our youth's use first. Downtown, I, yeah, 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 yeah. Downtown Bothell's a population center where councils for decades have prioritized putting the vast majority of our housing growth. And I think kids growing up in apartments downtown deserve a place to play outside. And that goes from, you know, toddlers to 18 years old. If we can build an attractive park they can walk to, we can serve those neighbors really well and also reduce traffic and climate pollution and all of the other effects from them having to get in their car to drive to something. You know, this is the gateway to the city and I think what we do with it speaks to our values. And I would like something at the gateway of our city that says, we really value providing our kids a world-class place to play, like and to get outside. We put in, we're, we're good at putting in playgrounds, but we don't do a good job of doing things for older kids. So I want to continue to explore a skate park and a pump track. And I'd like to know how much space it would take to put in like real deal world-class facilities. You know, if our facilities are good enough, there are opportunities for economic development surrounding these things because there's not a whole lot of world-class facilities out there. You know, Leavenworth put a pump track in and hosted a few years ago Pump Track World Championships. Like a whole lot of people come in, we talk about heads and beds for LTAC. Like this could be not just a world-class place for our kids to play, but it could be something that brings in, brings in money for us and brings in other people. I would, I would love to see like really cool skate park, pump track events happening like right here. I think that'd be amazing. The second, and I'm going to piggyback off Councilmember Dodd here, I was happy to hear the broad support of the community about prioritizing park over parking. You know, we know from the Urban Three Study that we have paved almost 20% of Bothell to be for people to drive on already. It's the biggest category of land use in the city and that pavement is far more than our total parks and green spaces combined, including Wayne and the forest and the bigger stuff we've acquired over the last decade or so. So I want to see less pavement, more green space, more places for kids to play. I do think there should be ample ADA parking available onsite, but I'd also like to make a really clear, safe path that is signed to get people back and forth between the lot across the river and the Kaisner Park and Ride. And maybe like big signs when people are coming in being like, hey, Bothell Landing parking here. We've got the 102nd Avenue Bridge that goes right across there and it's a pretty short walk for an able-bodied person. So I, I want to pave as little of this as possible. Like I want to see green space. I want to see places for kids to play, places for the community to gather. And if we build a park that is that awesome, I am deeply confident people will walk a couple hundred yards to get there. So I would like to see some more detailed demographics from the survey, like how many people responded, what the average age of respondents is. I'd love to know where they live. I think we should build a park first and foremost for the people that live in the neighborhood rather than prioritize people that live somewhere else. Let's see, love the storage building. I have looked on with envy at what Kenmore has done to enable vendors like Steve at What's Up to rent floating things and think that's really cool. So I'm, I'm excited to see that in here. Love the suggestion of removing the turn lane to encourage pedestrian access. That turn lane's pretty short. When I turn right there, almost all the time, if the light's red, I have to wait for the cars in front of me before I can get to the turn lane anyway. So like I just, I don't see that as a huge value add. And plus we'd be less likely to lose our deputy mayor because I know he's almost been hit there a few times as he walks across the street and, and I like Rami. So probably not a shock that I prefer option A of all three. The other thing is the events plaza. You know, we have had really successful events in our pedestrianized main street and I know we're going to be opening up that downtown plan to work on that as soon as our comp plan is over. I would like to prioritize places for kids to play over the event space because I think we're going to have a really world-class event space kind of right across the street here in our downtown. The splash pad, absolutely. Like you probably figured with my prioritize kids and a place to play, there's not a lot of those around here. I think we're, we're through that phase now, but other people having kids, like that would be amazing. Option B has too little to do for kids and too much pavement. And I don't really see a need for option three because half of the park is that walking forested area already. I don't like the space for a dog park. I think we should prioritize human children here. And I do think we need a dog park, but I think it should be in a different park. So pedestrian bridge, would it be possible for, to design space for it to be added into the future and kind of have that be a modular thing that we could then spend the next decade going for grant money for or, you know, have alongside of an EF&amp;G development and kind of leave that option available to us, but not necessarily have to pay for it right away?
Yeah, I think that absolutely would be an option, probably the, the preferred option as we move forward, since we know that that would be a very, very expensive, you know, amenity to add, but very popular as well. I do want to just interject as well that really when we said options here, I think the lesson learned for us is it's more concepts.
Yeah.
And so we don't want anyone really to land on one option or option two, option three. We're really looking at the concepts and when we get all of this information, we'll distill it down. You know, we, we, we kind of see this as an opportunity to sort of take the ideas that you really like from all three and then bring those together in our final preferred option as we bring that through our community.
Awesome. I appreciate that. I'm almost done.
Okay, just answer one too.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, once we get to preferred plan, we would, that's when we'll be doing a very detailed cost estimate and we can build out a phasing plan. So it's common in parks to phase in improvements and we can design for that.
Awesome. Thank you. The, I am, one thing that I don't love about the space is it's right on a highway and that is both a noise and pollution issue as well as a safety issue. So like what would like a tree barrier look like? Like trees that were, that were close enough together to, you know, have a lot of pollution and the noise stay on the other side of it and also substantial enough that if the worst happens, that cars hit the tree and don't come into the park?
Yeah, and I know option two wasn't your favorite, but at this scale it might be a little hard to see, but what we've done is really done a dense grove of trees and actually an option three as well and suggested mounding, so using topography as well. So that would help with the visual feeling and to some extent noise, once you don't see it, you kind of.
Don't hear it as much.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Awesome. The, I love the community feedback that they would like to see indigenous history as well and like the walking path in the other area that we're not really looking at, like what if we had like a walking tour of the indigenous history going around there? So like people could go and they could look and read all the things and go from there. It was just a random idea I had. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
I, I hope I won't pepper you with too many questions here and I'll try to start with feedback. There are aspects of each of those, of each of the options that like I'm, I'm very much like, let's pull the best parts. And I think I want to start with the plaza because it really can be like a main kind of central feature for the space that's being designed. And I prefer the plaza in option one over the other options. I also prefer option one for the skate park and pump track, similar feedback as, as the mayor and Councilmember Dodd, that I really do want to prioritize usable space here and, and find, you know, maybe better connections to other parking areas that are nearby. I'm really grateful that you put in a water feature in all three. And so then it's just a matter of like which one's your favorite? And, and I think my favorite is option one that you've included here. I love that option one has two play areas. And, and I prefer that you have a swing area, a dedicated swing area in option two. And so I think especially when we're talking about older, older teenagers and as kids are getting older and into the teen years, swings become really necessary for like, like being able to be outdoors playing. Girls are often excluded from playgrounds as they get older because they would prefer to swing and swings go away as kids get older too. And so I think that I've seen some interesting information, like interesting research about just how important swings are for older kids especially and adults. I was totally that parent who strapped a baby onto me and I would swing to get the baby to sleep. And so if I could walk to a park and swing a baby to sleep, I'd be on board. Not that they're small anymore, but I did that. So definitely like I'm going to, I'm just going to say swings, absolutely swings. And then if I, looking at the three different deck options, I actually prefer the option three deck over the other, other ones that you included. I very much want to see the concession area over by the boat launch and seeing improvements for that. And I would prefer the, the tree lining 522 that was discussed as well. And then very much want to see indigenous history included in the historic district. I do have, so that's sort of my overall feedback. Other than that, I have questions. At any point, did you guys look at designing a tunnel instead of the pedestrian bridge?
We discussed it. We didn't draw it, you know, at this stage of drawing, it's not that hard, but it's, to us, it doesn't seem as inviting a way to cross. It's the, then first off, the, could, could land with the elevator on each side as well or otherwise you're going pretty far back to ramp down. The distance of the crossing, it would be, you know, providing lighting to make it comfortable because you wouldn't necessarily have a good visual sightline to the entry or good natural light coming in. We certainly could explore it. I, I do think probably at some point we should meet with Wash Dot to just kind of high level, is this even possibly on the table? But curious as to maybe why a tunnel to you might seem more appealing.
I, I think depending on design, it can, it can be more welcoming and inclusive than a pedestrian bridge. I know just a lot of people with mobility challenges see a bridge and they see it challenged rather than something that can be easily navigated with like a wheelchair. And yeah, I, in, in my wheelchair pushing days, I would much prefer a tunnel to a elevator and a bridge. I think that it, the movement is more smooth. And so I, I remember we, in previous discussions around this, we, I've just, I have been a proponent of the tunnel and so I'm going to bring it up again.
Yeah, I think it works well along the Berkhamon Trail where you're seeing those tunnels that are paralleling the major road. In this case, it's a, it's a different type of crossing and the distance to start that ramping down into the tunnel, same length as ramping up and/or elevator on each end. So, but yeah, maybe we'll look into it.
Does the bridge not require as much space to ramp up and ramp down?
Same, same amount of space. I guess it would, it would be a similar travel time going down or up.
I do think a tunnel is smoother travel because there's less stops and starts with having to go, having to go up to go over to go down again, instead of just a smooth kind of like gradual down and then up again.
Yeah.
That's my perspective on it.
Yeah.
So that's enough about tunnels, from me at least. Other people can say what they want to say. So I, my feelings on the dog park is what happened to the results of the dog park study? Are there, is that still going forward? Are there other places we could have a dog park? I'm not opposed to having a dog park here, but I think I do prefer the mayor's suggestion of including more skate park, pump track type activities there instead of dog park. So like, but I still know we need a dog park in the city, so.
Correct. So, you know, really due to capacity issues, we, we think that the real opportunity to perhaps take that study on will be when we do the master planning efforts for the former Wing Golf Course, which we hope to be under contract by the end of the year. That will be a process that we'll go through all next year. But we really think that there's a lot of conversation about a dog park, particularly at that facility. We know that there's some significant restrictions, so I think there's a good nexus to have that conversation with our. conversation with our community and try to determine what is the best step forward for that.
Go ahead.
I had a question about that. I know Snohomish County considers a dog park to be passive use and King County considers it to be active use. Is there a process to position, petition the county to change that? Because I know they're the easement holders.
We certainly could take it to the Conservation Futures Board, but we have approached them about that, that issue. I think it's more about an active, high, or highly active use and also building of structures to, you know, put a, a dog park and enclose it in an off-leash area. There's a lot of critical areas at the former Wing Golf Course, as you know, and, you know, a lot of it's more about the environment. So, they're really pretty strong with the passive use there, but we certainly can continue to ask and see if there's opportunities to explore with the county. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for reviewing that because definitely we've heard loud and clear, like, yes, dog park. It's just weird. And, and I like the thought of it, but I also like the thought of expanding play facilities.
I, I would say, you know, there is a challenge with dog parks because all of our parks are dog parks. If you go there to any of our parks, that people, you know, they'll go where the closest park is and that's where they're going to take their dog. So finding a park is, is difficult because oftentimes when you reach out, everyone wants a park, they just don't want it at their park because, you know, they have but to it and, you know, there's things like that. So, we have explored that in a couple parks already and very consistent, you know, hearing back from the, the folks that lived around the park on the periphery that they love dog parks, they just don't want it at that park.
Thank you for sharing that. That's good to hear. I don't love hearing that, but it's, it's a dynamic that has to be reckoned with in our, in our neighborhoods and communities. Next up is talking about playgrounds. Are the playgrounds, you know, visioned here inclusive? Okay.
Absolutely.
Cool, cool. It just hadn't been said, so I wanted it to be said. And then next up is especially for families who have kids with special needs. I've, I've heard several times in our community, a request for fenced parks and playgrounds that have a fence around it so that we can protect kids who may like to elope, especially when you have a park this close to a major waterway and with how some special needs kids are very, very drawn to water. I think having a fenced park nearby the water would, would be an accessibility and inclusion practice that would be really good to help fam, like parents especially, not be so scared taking their kids to parks. So, thank you. Thank you for hearing that feedback. Next up is the memorial for the US Armed Forces. I don't see it included in any of these designs. So what happens to that?
It will find a home. It, that's very observant of you. And I, we, we haven't drawn it in, but as we, what we understand from talking about it is it doesn't need to stay in its location where it is, but we do need to make sure it's provided again. So, I, I think there isn't anything about any of these options that can have a good place for it that's specials, but we'll make sure to note the location next time and develop that.
Great. Yeah, just to make sure that we're not losing it.
I would just add too that, you know, as we develop Madrazo Park, which is moving forward now, there is a, a pretty large and significant memorial for all veterans being built into that park. So, that will be coming back before you once we get through some design issues, but excited to bring that back and have that conversation.
Yeah, great. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And I would then ask, is it, so is it required to keep the memorial at Bothell Landing or could it possibly shift to Madrazo Park as a more fitting?
There's no regulatory requirement to keep it there. However, I think we would want to have that, that conversation with our community. It was a community effort to put it there and certainly we would want to, you know, take those things into consideration. There are some, some bricks there that are in memory and in honor of, so we'd want to find a, a place to also place those as well.
Absolutely, very much. Speaking of memorials, I wasn't sure if this was going to come up, but benches will be preserved and just repositioned? Yes. Okay, good.
Yeah, and I didn't talk about it in much detail because I was trying to go fast, but all of these concepts are add additional picnic tables and benches because we know that's something that's across the board, people were interested in.
Yeah. I...
But yes, if there's a memorial bench, we...
Yes, yes. Yeah. My, my family has a memorial bench for, for my mom. So, I very much want to just make sure that it's somewhere in the park and keep that going. So, thank you. And then last up is I have questions around option two and I think option three as well. Next to the swings, there is an unmarked pale green area that is not, that's not labeled grass. And I'm curious what that is?
I'm not sure why the, honestly, why the green is different, but it is a landscaped area and meant to be a buffer from the parking area.
Okay, so grass?
Grass. Well, or planting, but yes.
Planting. Okay. And then I think I maybe saw it somewhere mentioned that the, the surface covered on the play areas are, are not going to be mulch? Or and they'll be like the springy foam stuff or?
Well, so if for inclusive play areas, one of, one of the key elements of that is that it is more universally accessible. Engineered wood fiber mulch technically meets code for accessibility, but it's challenging. Anybody who's pushed someone in a wheelchair knows it's challenging or has used a wheelchair. So, there are different ways of creating a more accessible surface that includes play turf, which is similar to field turf, but has a pad underneath for resiliency, ported in place rubber. There's even a cork product available now that's like ported in place rubber. So that those kind of materials can be explored, but I would say for inclusion, a, one of those surfaces would be the way to go.
If I'm allowed to have an opinion at this point, cork please. I know that for kids with, with disabilities, that experience of the ground cover really matters. And so I love to hear that there's now a cork option to the, the rubber option. So, thank you. And that brings me to the end of my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
We are going in a anti-clockwise fashion here tonight. Thank you for the presentation. Really exciting. It's easy to get carried away with conceptual designs when I see them in a packet, but I will echo as a fourth on minimizing parking. I don't think that we need to pave over any more of our parks. And there's plenty of other access areas to explore. Thanks for looking into those options. I wouldn't cut anything out just due to WashDOT or signalization, even though it's probably kind of a long timeline, but good to hear that that could be kind of phased. I echo a lot of the comments of the previous council members, so I'm gonna kind of focus instead on the environmental aspect. I think one way to honor and recognize indigenous history and, and culture and use of Bothell Wetlands historically is to engage tribal representatives in the design of features today such as riparian restoration on the banks and to what extent we should be modifying the banks for decking. And so that would be something, maybe a quick reaching out to tribal representatives to get feedback on that. I know that if we were to go ahead with looking for funding for this project, we would have to do tribal engagement anyway, so why not engage early? The other thing is looking at, you know, opportunities for restoration in the riparian areas too. It looks like, you know, option two has a more accessible boat launch, which is really interesting to me. I'd be curious to see kind of if there would need to be Army Corps permits for modification of the bank there and kind of what that looks like, but that's intriguing. I think that, you know, in terms of offsetting some of the environmental challenges, the dog park, it's not an appropriate place for a dog park to be this close to the river and for a year-round dog park to be this close to the river. And also, you know, if we're going to be paving in some of these design concepts, it's a lot of parking. And if we're going to be creating that much impervious surface, we would need to offset that with some low-impact design. The other things that I'm thinking about in terms of environment are surface cover. Intriguing to hear about cork as an option, but I'm rather against putting rubber or, you know, shredded tires next to the river. And also just in terms of, of heat, a lot of, when school playyards are designed, I'm sure you've engaged in this before, but we're looking at how hot are the playgrounds? And oftentimes at schools, like we build pretty tree-lined streets for the parents and then the playgrounds are like void of any vegetation and they're just really hot, hot surfaces. And so that's something that I'm looking at intently here is making this sort of plug-in with the natural environment. So, really like the idea of water feature, really like the idea of play areas, not only for children and those with disabilities, but also for, you know, older teens. I think that's kind of a, a challenge here, living in Bothell. There aren't a lot of third, third places and so this could be one where, you know, teens and school age kids can come to play as well. I will hold it there.
Okay, I only talked about parking earlier, so I'm gonna jump back in while they duke it out for next. So, I did want to say, I love in option one, the two different play areas. I think about fencing, there's a lot of reasons. I just think about my son from like one and a half to like three would just bolt. And we used to go to Tam Bark Park in Snohomish County because it had a fence and I could just relax a tiny bit. And then the other thing that we do now, because he's eight, is we go to Minor's Corner a lot because the playground is super accessible and I can actually play on all the equipment. So when we're talking about teens swinging and stuff, like all ages, maybe thirty-six, thirty-seven, whatever age you think I am, and, and up and, and down. So I love just a lot of different play options so that we can meet, you know, different ages that people are at. But like, as long as I can play with my kid and he's interested, because I hear that maybe someday he won't be, I love having that option there. And then just the thought of like with, the dog park did concern me. I'm glad you spoke about that, Councilmember Kurt, because it's, it's right next to the river. And so, it's clear we need a facility year-round. I just really want us to think about, once that's permanent, I don't, I don't want to do more harm when we're trying to do good. So, that's, that's one area of concern. I do think if we don't have a dog park in the final design, we should probably be able to speak to what the plan is there since it's, it's pretty clear that, that's, if there's one thing that's going to unify Bothell, it's a dog park. And we've already, it looks like we're solving the splash pad problem. So that's the other thing. I do love the idea of more community spaces too. I know with the, with the Lidle House in particular, it's historic. There are a lot of rules around like the kinds of foods you can have in there and the catering. So I'd love more community space. New restrooms is great too. I'm just, you know, thinking of practical things. You take your kid into the park. Mine was afraid of the toilets at Bothell Landing for a while before he was like, okay, they'll be fine. So, all of that looks really great. I think just play and gathering, it all looks really good. It's, it's all going to be exciting almost no matter what. And I appreciate the carve-outs for the things that are important to our residents, like the historical buildings, the access to the river for recreation on the water, not just near it. Yeah, I think that's great. I, I love the, the playground talk and I just wanted to second, playgrounds that work for all ages are really great. And as a, as a consumer, playgrounds at every age thus far, like that sounds super exciting. And I will let you too.
So, I would like to just say that Erin and I have actually spent the last couple of months reaching out to stakeholders in our inclusive playground project.
Yeah.
So we've had an opportunity to talk about the elopers with Kindering. We've had an opportunity to talk to them at the Sorensen School. We've also met with Alyssa Burnett Center to really sort of gain an understanding of, you know, what are those different features that, that all of those, those different groups that are in our community, you know, what, what is it that they, you know, want to go see in a park and how do they use our parks? So we're really trying to sort of gain that understanding, even though it's not specifically the focus of this project, we are concurrently working on our inclusive playground project. So, we are working with our community to understand exactly your point about the elopers.
Well, yeah, and I, I absolutely believe that just because we learned about inclusive playgrounds for one part of our city, wouldn't mean, like, we would take that knowledge to other projects in the city too. So, thank you for saying that because I, I believed you that you were doing that, but I, I'm glad you said that.
That is absolutely the plan. I mean, we, that, that's the opportunity really. When you think about replacing a playground, that's a twenty-year sort of legacy project. So, where you can, you know, if you have the opportunity to replace a playground, if you can make it fully inclusive and welcoming and inviting so that everyone can use it, that's what we should be doing.
Like, why would you build a playground that excludes when you can build one that includes? Real quick question, they who hesitate around extroverts are lost. The light orange, what is that surface on, in all of the options?
Oh, like in the, in like the historic courtyard?
The walkways, like the, everything that's not, this is a thing.
When we draw concepts, we try and be vague about paving, but the, you know, idea that there is, especially in a plaza, that there might be nicer pavement treatments and, and at this point, we're showing all the walkways as just this beige-ish peach color because we didn't want to start talking about, well, this is concrete and these are pavers and this is, because that's the level of design that we get to as we get farther. But essentially, it's hard surface.
Okay. I would like to minimize hard surface as much as possible in the, in the final design and I'll stop now.
And I just...
Come on!
I wasn't done!
I would say that, because we've been talking, especially because we've been talking about inclusion, that the idea is that all pathways would be fully accessible. There's different ways to do that, but whatever that surface is for a pathway or a gathering area would be...
And there's ways to do that that is impervious or that is pervious, correct?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I, accessibility is, is, has got to be king there. I think if we're going to call it an all-ages space, you have to be able to, to walk, roll on it and not, I, I'm in my wheelchair pushing stage and honestly, the, the electric wheelchair makes me more nervous because then you can't pivot like you can when you're pushing the wheelchair. So, for my wheelchair user, just steadiness is great. The last thing is what I have forgotten. So, off to one of you two.
Last time, you said last thing and it wasn't the last thing. I don't have much to say except for two pages. Actually, like, I'm gonna go, I, to your points, these are concepts. These are not like, oh, pick this and pick that. And so I want to go with the higher level, you know, what are we trying to do with this, with the space? And I agree that we need to maximize human use and greenery over parking and pavement because we do have a lot of parking in, around the area. We do need to have ADA-accessible ones though onsite, I think. I said accessibility, that's in terms of the ADA, you know, accessibility, but also in terms of accessibility because the park is completely disconnected from the rest of Bothell. We have this massive viway that, that splits, splits this, splits that section of downtown. So, we need to have something, pedestrian bridge, tunnel, different lane. It doesn't matter, but we need to have a better accessibility to the rest of the city. We do need to have, as everybody says, young children activity stuff and older youth activity stuff as well as the young adults over here to go and, and, and play. So... So-
Young and perky?
Young. So, yeah, because, you know, I think my kids were born and raised in Bothell, so I see the transition. And then, we went to Parker-Bothell Landing a lot, then we stopped going, because kids just aren't interested anymore, you know? My son loves basketball, but my daughters want to swing, and both of them have no option to go to Parker-Bothell Landing. So having something there will be very nice. A place to hang out, this past weekend, was we went to Winita Park, because it's right by the water, and they knew how to take advantage of that. We don't have the same water body, but we do have, or actually, so like, create something where people want to hang out by the water, kids can go down and play by the water, I don't know if that's a possibility, but, you know, something, or a bunch of people want to go and paddle, or whatever, you know, what's up, or whatever. So that would be a good place. And barbecuing, you know, go hang out, have a picnic, have a shelter. I mean, you think about the rage in the summer, what would you want to do, type stuff, that you can't do in Bothell today, but it will be awesome to have it done, you know, within our lifetimes. Improved river activities, as I mentioned, we are blessed to be like MSN City by a water body, so take more advantage of that. Right now, it's disconnected. You mentioned concessions, I say concessions, food carts, food trucks, whatever, you know, have a lively space. I don't know if we can do that, because people also want to eat, and not just have ice cream, they want to, you know, buy, teenagers want to buy snacks, but adults want to buy actual real food to eat, so that would be a good thing. Historical buildings, yes, where they are, and it's like the best design, we have the experts here to decide where that is. So that's for the summer uses, and times when we can actually walk outside. What about the winter uses? None of the concepts talk anything about winter uses. One of the things that happened when I was in Vancouver last year, I think it was, so they have a skate park in the summer, but in the winter, they turn it into an ice rink. That was my suggestion also for Lot EFG, but we're going to get food trucks, good choice also, but you know. So that's the thing, so having a space that could be versatile, both for all-year-round activities, will be a good thing. You know, especially when we talk about shelter places, like the Hangar, you showed the picture there, that's a really good space to be used in the winter and the summer, you know, sunny days and not-so-sunny days. So, those are the, like, the very high level. I didn't pick and choose, I think I picked and chose things from all the concepts that you have shown here, which are great. The amphitheater, by the way, having a little, I mean, that's a great idea. A lot of times, I've been there, and like, I didn't want to be there anymore. So, but, and if you start having bands or whatever, I mean, having a stage-like place for them, that will make it look really cool to go and hang out, so.
Quick question about the gravel parking that's on the other side of the river. How many stalls is that parking lot?
So the gravel stall, you're talking about the one over on the Hundred and Second Avenue Bridge?
Yes, yep.
So that's partially owned by the city, and partially owned by King County. The larger portion is owned by King County. It's used as a trailhead amenity for, obviously, the Miami River Trail. If I were to estimate, I would say it's probably, best-case scenario, if it was organized, you could probably get fifty cars in there.
Okay, that's good to know. I think Councilmember Dodd said Option 1 sings to me. I resonate with that. I think there's a lot of really good design elements in it that really got me excited before I even flipped to two and three to look at. Couple of the elements from Design 1 that I really liked was the maximization of the active-use spaces within the park. The point was made that there's a lot of passive use directly adjacent to this, with boardwalks and trails and things like that, which is great. I love to see this activated and be a place with something for everybody. I'm not married to the dog park being there, I thought it was kind of cool, but there's some good points made about how close it is to the river and not being concerning, could be an active-use pump track, something like that, that replaces it. So, not married to that specifically, we do need a dog park somewhere, but I do like the activities here. And I do like the layout as well, of the event plaza in the middle, it's a great central location, regardless of where you're coming from, you end up in this really cool place with a water feature, something we've all really wanted for a very long time. A couple of points made about our kids being too old now to use it, that's all right, the next generations will be able to use it, and we will be able to go there and enjoy watching them use it, which is great. In terms of the other items from Option 1 that I liked, I really did like the bandstand and the seating canopy, think those would be great enhancements to what's currently there, while reusing something that's already in place, and it's a great amenity for that park. From Option 2, I like the intersection crossing, the new one, but really, my concern is safety. I really want pedestrians' safety to be, safety to be something we think long and hard about. The bridge is great, but that's a multimillion-dollar thing to build, very, very expensive. I don't know if it's feasible or not in the near future, but we want people to come out of the city and into the city, and visit our restaurants and our shops, and connect to the trail. So whatever we do, we need to think long and hard about how we make it as safe as possible. And I agree with the mayor, that the turn lane is usually inaccessible if you're backed up on 522 heading west, so if WashDOT is willing to let us remove that, that could do some great safety enhancement there. And then, Option 3, I really like the entry signage and wall, the idea, making it more enhanced and beautiful, and, you know, making people wonder, I wonder what's in there? Like, this is, that looks really cool, what else is in there? I really want to go in there and check it out. So, if we can bring that in to this. I also echo the safety of the highway there. I have an eloper as well, I call him an adventurer, often climbing trees and disappearing to places, exploring, so if we can make a way to protect kids in that park from getting to the highway, and also vehicles from coming into the park. I don't think I've seen a lot of accidents in that area with vehicles veering up onto the sidewalk, but you never know. So if we can do something with natural elements to enhance the safety there, I am definitely for that. And I think that is all of my feedback.
Well, with that said, we really appreciate the comments tonight. I think we got some really good feedback that we can work with. Just a reminder, the next steps, we're going to be going out to our community and sharing these concepts with them as well in June, through a survey, as well as a workshop at the Park at Bothell Landing. We expect this item to come back to you at least two more times, so you'll have additional touches, and you'll be able to see the information that we're collecting, and as it kind of distills down into the final, hopefully, preferred option, that'll be in front of you to make a decision. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. This was a lot of fun. All right, next to something almost as exciting, we have Agenda Bill 24076, the multi-family tax exemption overview. And we can probably wait for, you guys don't have to like rush, like, it's okay. I just started talking. Thank you.
That's what happens when we go to topics too quickly. Well, thank you, council, and as I introduce this, I'll just let you in on, like, there's, on the staff side, there's at times internal politics of like, who gets scheduled for the last topic, and then certainly, who would be scheduled to follow an exciting presentation about like park design? So, when the city manager is the lead presenter, that's clearly the revenge, that's who gets to go last. So, we're excited, though, to come and talk to you tonight about multi-family tax exemption. Just as a bit of background, I'm sure you'll recall, but back on February 13th, we had a projected agenda item request, much like tonight. And while typically, we bring back projected item requests as sort of a short summary of, here are some things we can do, with this one, part of the request was around not thinking about something new, or creating something new, but was, let's evaluate what already exists. So what we were asked to do is to bring back a briefing on, what's the current multi-family tax exemption code? There were some questions about, what are the years that are in the code, and that sort of thing, so let's highlight that. There was a question, we've heard comments from a couple of public speakers about the lack of utilization, so there was a request to confirm of, has the city of Bothell's code for multi-family tax exemption been utilized? The answer is no. So we wanted to confirm that. But then also, if there was any sort of possible opportunities for council to explore of what different might look like. So, that's really what we're here for tonight. What I want to reiterate is, is that we are not, then, sometimes with study sessions, we're proposing, here's some code revisions, that sort of thing. We're not at that point yet. This is the equivalent of, let's come back and answer those questions. So we will be looking for, though, is any feedback of how you would want us to move forward. And there are, we talked about the council vision earlier, there are already some things that you've initiated around looking, doing an update of the Affordable Housing Plan, for example, and so we could potentially fold in some of this. Some of that type of work, we might take your feedback from tonight, and then come back with you, to you of, here's what initiation would look like. So just want to, again, just reiterate that. The last thing, as we start looking at some of the detail, and before we turn it over, is, we wanted to start with, okay, well, what is currently in place now? When I stop talking, Mike might want to dive into this a little bit, but really, what I wanted to highlight is, is that there are four stated goals of the code that we've been working on, as it exists now. It was to increase the supply of multi-family housing opportunities for low and moderate-income households, was number one. Number two is to promote community development and affordable housing within residential targeted areas. It's also to encourage additional housing in certain areas to support investment in public transit projects, then also to accomplish the planning goals required under the Growth Management Act, as implemented by the city's comprehensive plan, which, again, is work we're doing right now. So, that wasn't what was the comp plan that was there when we started this, but we will have the opportunity to be doing some of this work. And then, the last thing I wanted to touch on before turning it over for further presentation, is just this reminder, too, of, in your Agenda Bill, there was the current growth targets that we're going to be facing for 2044. And between, again, we're lucky to be in two counties, we love that, and so when you add the chart together of the two counties, we're looking at over 12,000 affordable units at different levels, that we're being charged with, to figure out how to make that happen by 2044. So what I want to just reemphasize is that MFTE is intended to be one of the tools that helps us get there. But as you, again, if we look at this from a standpoint of, so it hasn't been utilized yet, we're going to hear a little bit about some things that maybe we work on that. I also, you know, take a pause of, when I think about development in the city, there's some questions that we will not be able to answer tonight around, you know, how many opportunities have there been? Like, how many projects? And as I, as I think about it, like, my first impulse was like, well, less than ten, but it may be like, really, since we adopted this code, maybe like more than three. So, when we say it hasn't been utilized, I always want to put that in context as well. But then, what we also don't know is that, who has considered it, and said, we're not going to invest in Bothell to begin with. But the other side of that coin, too, is, is just, as we, at our last couple meetings, we talked about coming back and working on legislative agenda, or as we think about, what are the opportunities to influence, much like dog parks and passive areas? When we think about it that way, too, is that Bothell's been given the charge for these 12,000 units, and if one of the tools we have is MFTE, and we haven't seen utilization on that, just continue to plant the seed, too, of be thinking about, what are the things that we want to try and ask for or influence that maybe isn't in our direct control? But as we talk about, I know this council has a heart for affordable housing, and we want to hit that target. We're not saying it's, we're not feasible, we're saying we want to do it. What are the tools that might get us there? So this is one of the tools, and we'll put it in that context. With that, I'm joined tonight with Jason Greenspan, our Community Development Director, who, a lot of this work, if there is anything you want to initiate, might already be in the works of things that his department's working on. There's certainly things that will go to community development, so Jason is here to support tonight and talk about some next steps. But we're also really thrilled to be joined tonight by Mike Schanger, who is a senior planner at Arch. He was part of the team that helped bring us our code. He also gets to work on codes throughout other Arch cities, and has some data reflecting what exists in other places, and really, it's, we're so fortunate to have somebody who understands not only Bothell, but also our region, and really grateful for Mike's time and support in helping answer these questions for you all tonight. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Mike, and we'll get going.
Thank you very much. It's great to be with you again. Thought that we could refresh your memory on the history of what's in place now. The affordable housing codes or regulations, incentives, et cetera, have evolved or been adopted in a series of moves over the last five, six years. On the left-hand side is kind of a timeline of events. The foundation refers to that section in Chapter 12 of the code that kind of establishes the conditions of affordable housing for, under, you know, any incentive or regulatory programs. And then, the city began implementing them through various upzoning and related projects, first in a section of the downtown transition zone, and SR 522, rather, overlays south of downtown, then the Big Canyon Park plan and zoning project. Then, MFTE was enacted shortly, actually, shortly after the GDC overlay, if I remember right. And then a couple of voluntary incentive programs came after that. So, in a sense, it's been a little bit piecemeal, and we hope that we're heading toward a point where it becomes to feel a little bit more coherent, and both for benefit of the city and developers. Because, you know, kind of, understandability is a big part of developers feeling comfortable and confident going forward. So the, on the right-hand side, refers to inclusionary, and that, in this case specifically, means mandatory affordability required by zoning. So there are four sections or areas of the city that do that, and downtown transition zone, the GDC overlay just to the east of us, again, along the SR 522, and then the biggest one in Canyon Park. And each of those, as you can see, have, without MFTE, they have unique requirements for affordability. Once we added on the multi-family tax exemption incentive on top, to layer on top of that, that enabled the affordability conditions to be more uniform across them. So what we have now is two options with tax exemptions. And for most housing unit types, an eight-year tax exemption would require 15% of the units to be affordable, at 60% of median. And a 12-year tax exemption would require 20% of the units to be affordable, at 60% median. And that would be, the affordability would last for the life of the use as housing. Now, for micro-apartments, the affordability would be lower. And the reason for that is because the objective being to get some public benefit out of the, or value out of the affordable units, and that coming in the form of rents that are deeper or less- And that coming in the form of, of rents that are deeper or, or less expensive than market rents. Now in the other parts of the city where zoning does not require affordability, no inclusionary, and those zones are listed there under the subareas. What we've done so far is merely to establish a 12-year tax exemption option. And that would require for most unit types, 10% of the units at 60% of median plus 10 at 70% median. And you'll notice that all the 12-year option, 12-year exemptions require 20% set aside. And that's because state law requires that for a 12-year exemption, at least 20% of the units have to be set aside as affordable. The eight-year option, our exemption does not require any affordability in state law. That's merely a local option. So that could be anything that you set it to be. So that's, whoops. From a map view, this is what those regulations look like. So anywhere you see the deep magenta color is area that's eligible for a multifamily tax exemption, that just the 12-year option. And where you see the green are the various areas that have inclusionary zoning as well. And so some affordability is required there. If the developer opts for the tax exemption as well, then that adds more affordability. This table is, I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, but it, but if you have questions on it, I'm more than happy to answer them. It's meant to really show that the variety of programs that Arch staff administers for our member cities and that they have taken a variety of approaches. So we try to help each of our community structure, what they think is most appropriate for their needs and their housing markets. Bothell is one of five, six, seven, if you include Iskua and Samamish, that have some form, some level of mandatory or inclusionary zoning. And all of those require affordability for the life of the project. About half of our communities have some form of MFT program. And most of those are also affordable for the life of the project, the exemption being Bellevue where their land use program is also a voluntary incentive program. Bothell's, I get, you could say is situated in terms of affordability level somewhat on the deeper end. That is to say that Bothell is now requiring affordability on the level of Kirkland and Redmond. And as soon as, you know, developers start building according to those codes, then you'll be getting affordability similar to, to those communities. So what this, I wanted to address a couple of the questions that have arisen as to whether or not the lack of uptake in the, in Bothell's MFT program has to do with either the mandatory affordability or the deep, the depth of the affordability, that is how low that the AMI level is, or, sorry, thought escaped me there. But so at, at a project level, we can look at communities that have the most participation. We have experience with now with 40-some projects that have used MFT across Bellevue, Kirkland and Redmond. And I'll just work from left to right. So as I said, Bellevue does not have any inclusionary zoning. Their land use incentives are purely voluntary. And they have, we don't know how many projects would have been eligible there. So that I'm guessing that there's at least a dozen that have not used MFT. But of those that have, I'm sorry, I need to pull up my notes here, which disappeared on me. So seven projects have used the voluntary density bonus. Five of those chose MFT. Now, two of those paid fees in lieu of the, the land use affordable units. So that just leaves the MFT affordable units. And in Bellevue, those only last 12 years. So after 12 years, the affordability on those units will disappear, they'll go back to market rate. Six projects in Bellevue have chosen MFT without any density bonuses. And those also will expire in 12 years. But again, I don't know how many have passed on MFT in Bellevue. So it's hard to know exactly, you know, what percentage have used it. Now in Kirkland, the way their code is structured, and they did this in 2009, they built their inclusionary program to require all of the rental housing to be 10% at 50 AMI. And they decided that with that requirement, they will also make all those projects eligible, eligible for an eight-year tax exemption. So naturally, all of them do that. And that's been 12 projects there. Two others have used MFT in Kirkland that did not have a, a land use requirement, but they used voluntary density bonuses. And nine projects without mandatory or voluntary land use bonuses, three chose MFT and six did not. So in total, you've got, I want to say, I can't do the math that fast in my head. I should have had it written down. But a majority of those, even including those that didn't have a land use requirement. And then in Redmond, and their MFT program is the most recent. So almost all of Redmond has some level of inclusionary zoning. And that is 10% of the units at 80% median. And so what, when Redmond added MFT, what they decided was to allow the 10% of units to qualify for an eight-year exemption by reducing the affordability from 80% of median to 60. And that has also been highly used. The only of the 17 projects that were eligible for that, one declined MFT outright. And the other two paid fees in lieu of the, of the affordable units. So they didn't, they weren't eligible for MFT either. So basically just one project actually provided affordable units in the inclusionary program, but said they didn't want the MFT. And one has actually gone to the 12-year exemption. So the conclusion that we're drawing from all this is that if you've got a mandatory affordability requirement underneath it, then developers are much more likely to use MFT as well. They're already having to provide the affordable units. They can use those same units to satisfy MFT by just making them more affordable. And it seems to be an easy decision for them. If the, if there's not a mandatory requirement in zoning, then everything's purely voluntary. Then you have to make the deal really sweet for them, really lucrative for a developer to, to want to take on the affordable units. And as often as not, they'll decide not to. The other thing about mandatory affordability is that because it's required, you can also basically set the terms of the affordability level. And so in Kirkland and Redmond, as I said, those units are coming in at 50 and 60% of median. And whereas in Bellevue, where they only have voluntary, then they can only get people to take MFT at the 70 or 80% of median. So they're not getting as much affordability. And, oops, did I switch? That's the affordability level. Hopefully the, the deeper shades show the deeper affordability. And then this shows the duration of the affordability. So all of those units in Kirkland and Redmond will always be affordable. And in Bellevue, where the affordability ends with the, when the tax exemption ends, then those will go away. And most of our cities have said, that's a problem. So we don't want to face, you know, having people in affordable housing lose that. They could, there is a 12-year exemption or extension, maybe Bellevue will adopt that someday, but right now they, they could disappear. Now, having said all that, the, I should mention that Kirkland, Redmond, and other cities have found ways to make the, those programs work at the deeper affordability by doing some pretty careful analysis, economic analysis that we help with. And, and that we also did in conjunction with Bothell's adoption four or five years ago. Now, it could be that we need to revisit that and we'd be more than happy to do so if you'd like us to do that and see if those, if the assumptions that we made, if the market conditions that we built into that modeling still hold up. It could also be that, you know, we would get all the same findings, but really, you know, we're facing, we're in a market situation here that doesn't support much in the way of housing development right now. And, and we're just in a situation to choose to be patient.
So we'll have Jason kind of wrap us up here and then we'll open things up for questions.
Sure. I've got a comprehensive plan on the brain lately. So if you recall back in 2015, when we had our last comprehensive plan, we had a follow-up on the housing strategy that was a result of implementing that plan. And that took about three years to get underway and we don't want to wait that long this time around. So we are already scoped to develop a housing action plan as an implementation step of the 2024 update. That's not only going to be implementing the comprehensive plan housing element, but also the city council vision for housing action plan. As was mentioned by our city manager, we have an obligation to plan for over 12,000 housing units by 2044. And up to 75% of those housing units need to be affordable to those making below 80% of area median income. And that's a real challenge for us. So we know we need to engage with the development community. We have a development services advisory group that we meet with quarterly, maybe not as quarterly as I would have liked over this past year. We've had some challenges in my department, but I think it's going to be reconstituted soon. And having that open dialogue with the development community to know what are the barriers to the uptake in MFT and what the opportunities are would be really useful to get on the ground experience, especially given the market challenges that we're facing right now. Clearly we have a lot of multifamily under construction in the city, but a lot of those are pipeline projects that have been in place for a while. So how do we keep that pipeline going? And we can pair MFT through the lens of other tools, inclusionary zoning, middle housing, which we've committed to city council by December of this year to have a work plan together and then have some sort of code available by the middle of next year for how we're going to address some more aggressive middle housing targets. So I think we can pair the housing action plan with inclusionary zoning tools with really doing a, a deep dive into what works and what doesn't work with MFT over this next year. And it's part of the work that we're already planning to do. And we'd love to get more feedback from city council on how we can scope that so that we're prepared to move forward with feedback from the development community over this next year or so.
So with that, this is the first opportunity to hear feedback. So curious for your thoughts, any questions for Mike while he's here? And we'll be prepared to answer.
I think, thanks for the presentation and thanks for being here tonight, Mike. Really appreciate all the work that Arch is doing in this realm, especially having comparable cities. That's really helpful to hear from. I do think that the kind of development climate in Bothell is much different than in Redmond, Bellevue, or Kirkland. And a lot of that has to do with their zoning and their, just like the base, the sweetened deals of development in those cities are much different than in Bothell. That probably leads into some of the reasons why we aren't seeing the same kind of pipeline of projects. There's also huge infrastructure projects in all those cities that also affect the development climate as well. So I'm thinking, you know, light rail communities, they're getting transit oriented development and it's just massive that we aren't getting here because of our lack of investment in those things. So it's hard to compare city to city and expect to see, well, if we pull the Redmond model, why aren't we seeing Redmond? So I am really cautious in looking at those comparables and expecting results. The other thing is that we implemented it in 2021. This, if we're thinking about it as an experiment, is too early to adaptively manage the MFT program here without seeing, you know, the results of our ongoing experiment carried out. We're undergoing comp plan changes. We're doing massive changes with middle housing. We're looking at, you know, reopening the downtown plan. That's going to have huge implications on the levers that developers are going to be utilizing to, to leverage housing production. The other thing is, you know, these, with House Bill 1220 and having mandatory affordability things, affordability sort of thresholds and bans in our community, I really think that, you know, cities like Bellevue are really going to have to grapple with creating affordable housing and having it go over the long term. Like those, if those affordable units created under MFT expire and become market rate, what are the implications for 1220? Like they're going to have to continually, they're, they have to continue to build or die. That's not the model that we should be doing here. So I think that some of the premises that we've put into the MFT program that I was around on planning commission, it hasn't even really been that long. So I think we need to keep carrying the, the experiment forward a little bit. You know, the comprehensive plan is still moving forward. We have our growth targets. That's going to affect the development community's interest in building here with other changes to our development code. And so thanks for the, the presentation and I'm, I'm still really interested in, I'm interested in hearing back from our development community on some of the barriers that they're facing. I suspect it's not that the MFT is not sweet enough. I think that there are other challenges to building in Bothell. And I'm, I'm hopeful that as we reengage with the development community, we pull in developers from adjacent cities too, to, to hear from, from their feedback as well. You know, I think if we continue to focus on the developers who have a history in Bothell, we might be getting more of the same perspective and the same things. And I'd like to diversify our feedback a little bit from that. Thanks.
I'm, I'm holding off in case, you know,
I'm holding off in case, you know, you want to. But I have thoughts as a, which probably comes as a surprise to you, absolutely nobody. You know, I really want to use this as a tool to maximize development of multifamily housing so that we can hit not just our housing goals, but our climate goals, traffic reduction, and maximizing our return on really big regional assets that aren't light rail, but our B R T, which will be a big sea change for transit here in Bothell. A lot of this conversation seems to assume that there isn't public benefit or a benefit to affordability for just having the housing. And and we know that not building housing leads to rent hikes directly to homelessness and a lot of the problems that we're experiencing as a region. From the research I've read, any inclusionary zoning requirement over twenty percent really starts to impact construction a lot. And I don't want to do that. Like, I I would like to use M F T E as an incentive to get units built and and address affordability that way rather than try to maximize the affordable units total and lose out on units. As we go into a housing action plan, I would really like, I know there have been a lot of studies that I've seen referenced, but I'd like to look at the best available data and not have inclusionary zoning requirements that severely impact housing construction in general. I think the best rent control is plenty of available housing. So I guess my feedback, which this might be a little preliminary in the discussion, but if the eight year can be anything, I'd say just go with our current inclusionary zoning requirements and try to incentivize more construction. I had a question about the twelve year, twenty percent required from the state. Does that stack on top of existing inclusionary zoning requirements?
You can count the same affordable units for both inclusionary and M F T E, or you can do them separately as Seattle does.
Got it. I would like to not include them separately and count both of the units the same and not go any higher than that twenty percent. You know, the comparisons of Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond. I mean, we aren't as expensive as those cities, but development costs aren't different here than there and our M F T E is more restrictive. So it does not shock me that we have not seen any M F T E development when the climate is far superior, like right down the street, like they can just go there instead. I understand what Councilmember Kurt says about it probably being too early to draw any serious conclusions, but if the climate to build is better in neighboring cities and then then that's where developers are going to go first.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, is that an encouragement that I've heard from Councilmember Kurt of when we do the request for feedback, include developers who are going to other cities, would that be?
A hundred percent. Like, I want to know, I want to know not just like why people are coming here, but like, why aren't people coming here? Like, and and what could we do to pull them in? One thing that I've gotten direct feedback on is requiring the units to be deed restricted affordable after the M F T E period is over is a big barrier to getting financing for a project. And without financing for a project, the project does not happen. So as we do feedback, I would say just ask specifically around that. I think the rest of what I wrote down is mostly a repeat. I mean, I guess the last thing that I would say is I I understand the desire of cities to not have somebody in an inclusionary zoned unit and have that go away in twelve years, but like, what's going to make the problem a whole lot worse in twelve years for a whole lot more people is not having the apartments built today. So I would just say, as we go through this, I would like to use this as a tool to incentivize more construction because I see the lack of housing is really the biggest impediment to affordability, not just for these specific units, but globally for those as well as, you know, the ninety whatever percent of us that live in market rate housing.
Can I ask a question? You had a slide that shows from nineteen ninety two to present or? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that one. So is this the, is this showing, so is this like total houses, total units created for that thirty two year period?
Yes.
I mean, is that assumes there are some incentives included, some not included. I mean, thirty years ago, there's probably nothing included, but then now we have.
These are the affordable units created with land use requirements or incentives or tax exemptions.
So that's, given the new requirements from the counties that we just talked about. I mean, in thirty years, we haven't built anything. The next twenty years, how are we, oh, we didn't build much. I mean, in the next twenty years, how are we going to build that thousands more?
Yeah. And again, which wasn't necessarily the question that you had, but as we started doing this research, I think that's something that's pretty striking, especially as we're working on the comprehensive plan is is just that that feedback of like, again, we welcome the challenge and it seems like some additional tools, whether that be funding sources, whether that be policy options, that sort of thing. There's, there's a messy knot that we're going to need help with.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it seems like we can have inclusionary zoning, we can have M F T E, we can have middle housing, all those things. And if one city has more relaxed policies, as the mayor mentioned, than another city, then developers are going to go to that unless there's something that's weakening the pot. Unless you look at things more, you know, zoom out and then you look at the region, you know, and then I see how do you increase this housing stock overall versus city by city.
And I think that's the, the thing too, is that at the deeper affordability levels, like that is not likely to happen at all, right? So that is the, there's that push pull of the grade, like the there's, there is a need for inventory. And layering on top of that of, we've got a external mandate saying, including these, like, how do, how do we reconcile those two? So again, I don't have a solution for you, but as our policymakers, would absolutely love direction on what, what sort of, again, I think some of that might be within your control, but some of that will be within your sphere of influence, like how do, where, who are the people we want to talk to? And again, legislative agenda might be a great option on that is to how do we articulate the need for solutions?
I see what you, see, now it's making, it's making sense because you can loosen up the policies as much as possible and say, okay, build, 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 build. But you live policy can be, but then at the end of the day, a developer is going to come here, it's like, do the math. If it doesn't add out, you know, pencil out, as they say, they're not going to build. So to your point, there has to be a state and federal level type discussions of how do you get more of that money? Because we do live in a capitalist society where profit is the driver for a lot of decisions. So how do you make it really cool to have a profit? To build, make it profitable to build in your city, which also achieves, you know, your affordability goals at the, at the affordability levels that are mandated by the state. Or actually, that's actually better for society in general, whether mandated or not. So to the points that the mayor mentioned, I mean, we do need more housing. It's just how do we make it happen? M F T E, to me, it seems are all the incentives for the past thirty two years haven't worked very well to really, I mean, stuff is happening, but it's not nearly enough. So how do you the next, now twenty years is less than thirty years. So how do you make it? How do you accelerate that affordable housing building? And I don't, I don't know the answer, just the question in my mind and that we need to explore, which you, it sounds like you already know the, you know, know the question, not the answer.
I was going to say, we expect the deputy mayor to know the answer. We do not.
Yeah, and I defer to the mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming and and reviewing all of this with us. There, there is, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I, I want to pick on a thread that I heard back when talking about Redmond. You mentioned that one of the things that differentiates Redmond's M F T E is that it's it's mandatory, yes, but also that it's all zones. And and so if we look at the map that you shared with Bothell, we have a limited number of zones where our M F T E is in effect. And then I'm just imagining, you know, if that were a map of Redmond, there would be more colors on it. Am I understanding this correctly?
Let me clarify, Redmond requires, has mandatory affordability throughout almost the whole city. There are two neighborhoods that don't have it. The M F T E is only available in downtown, Overlake and Marymore. So that's a much more select, so it's kind of the reverse of this kind of view.
So we see more, more green in Redmond? Sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the green in Redmond, green would cover the whole map and magenta would just be certain pockets of it.
So I wonder if that's a policy option for us is to look at expanding inclusionary zoning to all zones following the Redmond model. And that might be counterproductive, counter to what Carson previously said, but.
I don't think that's a wise choice to make because that's, you also have to think like, why does Redmond do that in Overlake? What are the big businesses in Overlake that are drawing developers like flies to a carcass, right? Like, I probably shouldn't say that, but and it was on the mic. I think there are fundamental differences between Redmond and Bothell in terms of what draws developers here. And I think that we can't even compare ourselves to Redmond because they have, their toolbox is like nine layers deep and ours is three. So if we're just saying like, we did this three years ago and it's not worked, well, that, we can't compare ourselves to Redmond when our toolbox is so shallow. Our development climate is so so short. Yeah, small toolbox. Yep, it's a, yes, it's very colorful. But I think we need a longer timeline to explore this if we're really thinking like, M F T E is broken. I don't think it's broken. I think that there are other things that are going on that are impacting the development climate. I think that there are other toolbox experiences that we need to look at without saying like, let's, let's cut off all development with inclusionary zoning and then incentivize it in certain neighborhoods by pulling it back with M F T E. I think that, especially with the comprehensive plan changing and whether we're going with neighborhoods or with urban villages or whatever, all neighborhood centers. We can't blanket the whole city right now with inclusionary zoning, which would just stop all development everywhere. And then we go back through with M F T E or other like incentivizations to to get the development that we want where we want it. I think that's way too fine grained. We should start with developing a, a longer toolbox before we start pressing in on M F T E. That's my opinion, but.
I could, sorry, I might provide a little more context to Redmond is, I don't know if this makes it sound more like Bothell or less, but Redmond first adopted inclusionary zoning when they upzoned downtown. They, they raised heights and they eliminated density requirements, so they just used height and setbacks and so forth. And this was in nineteen ninety two. Right? So Redmond was a much different place then and much smaller population. And they knew that it might take some time for the development to come, which is exactly what happened. And when they saw development coming to other neighborhoods, then they expanded it to Overlake and North Redmond, to single family neighborhoods and so forth. And so it, it progressed geographically over time as well. It wasn't something that they did, you know, just after, you know, all the growth happened and are all at once.
I was going to say, still to Carson's point, or Councilmember Kurt, sorry. It will take time, you know, you can't, and to your point also, like the, you can't pull and and change policy and you expect results the next month. I mean, we see thirty years, the other slide, thirty years, and we're still seeing something. If you change something now, it might take another thirty years to, to see the, the changes happen. So the question is like, how can we know whether something is working or not and to expand? How did, like, I know Councilmember Kurt doesn't like Redmond too much, but how do we know? How do we, how do we know, how did they know that they needed to make a change in a specific neighborhood at some point in time, you know, for example? Or any other city for that matter, you know, Paris.
One thing I do like to keep in mind is that when we're talking about our growth targets, we are looking at planning for Bothell being the size that Redmond is now. And, and so that might inform some of the directions that we take because we, they have, they have walked this path before, before us. So I want to contribute that.
And that, I appreciate that. I think too, the, the transportation options, the recreation options, the employment options, some of that is just not going to be replicated here in the time period that, that we have. I also, I appreciate that we went back to nineteen ninety two because I don't know if that made everyone else think about what you were doing, but I was in preschool. And my parents bought their house the next year in Bothell for ninety thousand dollars, thereabouts, and it was an appropriate amount of their income to pay the mortgage. And obviously, things have changed significantly as, as I became old enough to buy my own house. And it's hard not to, it's hard to look at this in a vacuum. And I know you're saying, please don't do that. And that was the message received for sure in the presentation because it is just one of our tools. And I almost, I feel like we're on a good path. I really am looking forward to that housing action plan. No pressure, Jason, but I did want to make sure that that will be available and and we'll have a lot of good time with it as we look at our legislative agenda. I think that we need to meet the moment. Obviously, we, we don't, we're already losing people who can't afford to live here. And and we've all lamented about that. And I think we have to somehow both remember that it's not SimCity and that we can't duplicate necessarily what other neighbors have done, but that we are already in a crisis. So I, I look to your guidance on balancing that. I'm not a fan of like changing M F T E right now, but I do really want to get into different scenarios that leverage. I think it can be, I'm going to speak for myself, but I think this applies to a lot of people in council. It can be hard to understand how all the tools interact with each other and like what we are and aren't going to get as we deploy that. So that sort of holistic view is so important, but also it's a, I think that that's hard for most people to understand unless they are in community development, maybe. So I, I really am, I appreciate this deep dive. I don't think that there's anything that's like, whoa, that's super wrong. We shouldn't be doing that. But I think coming back to that full action plan is going to be important. And, and just helping us provide context on what we can do now, but also like, and you'll see the results in X number of years. Because again, it's, it's so tempting to be like, nothing has changed. It's been six months, but that's also not how this works. So I appreciate the, just everybody seems to try to be balancing like, it's an issue right now, but we don't have a, a fast fix. We can't, you know, again, not SimCity, I'll just make that joke again, but it's, it's, I think we all want to do something. So I appreciate the guidance and I just look forward to more because I think the more is really what we need.
The one thing that I don't know that I'm completely clear on, and you probably said, and I probably missed, I would like to change some things about the M F T E. And is that something that we're going to wait for the housing action plan to do regardless of how this conversation goes? Or is that something that is small enough that we could pull it out?
Well, so far, I haven't, I, I've, I've heard your voice.
Yep.
I haven't heard anybody else saying that they wanted to see changes to M F T E sooner as a smaller fix. So I'm trying to capture some of the themes, but so far I've, I've only heard interest from one. And so thinking about how we apply this as our projected agenda items, I'd be looking for more of a concurrence from council.
I mean, my question is, it wasn't really a, I want to do this right now. It was a, like, I hadn't, I hadn't appropriately heard what kind of the options were and how that. was phrased.
Right, and I think that'd be, so if there was interest in bringing back what that might look like, but what, what I'm hearing is, is that there might be opportunities to do that within the current, the current planning initiatives, so let's finish the comp plan, let's do the downtown plan, let's do the, the affordable housing plan, and then see within that context. So that's what I'm hearing as the predominant theme, so I don't know, if there's anything other than that, that's what I want to hear more.
I am happy doing it inside of the Housing Action Plan. My comment was mostly just because this conversation has gotten much broader than the MFT. So like, the, the question I had is, like, as we have this super broad conversation, are we pushing something farther out that could be done far more simply, but, I mean, we need to have the broad conversation too, and I know we've got a really busy year in planning and a lot to do, and if we do it inside of the Housing Action Plan, that we are already planning on doing beginning of next year, that's totally fine with me.
Jason, any initial thoughts, or would it be, is this a digestible moment of where maybe we circle back after, after tonight and come back with some thoughts?
Well, you know, again, with MFT being one of the tools, we had committed to City Council that by the end of this year, we'd be sharing the scope of the Housing Action Plan with you. So with that in mind, we can make sure that MFT is a focus, just as it was with the Housing Strategy in 2018, and how we look at opportunities, given the feedback we're going to get hopefully from the development community over the next five to six months. That will help us scope how we're going to move forward with that in the Housing Action Plan, whether there's a change or not, and I think having Arch as a partner in that, and looking at the feasibility of it, would be really essential.
That's totally fine, and honestly, there are things in the Housing Action Plan that I would prioritize more highly than this, so like, I'm not trying to, I don't want to push any of that off, and I think that sounds fine.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense, yeah, so that's helpful clarification.
You don't want to say anything? Sure you do. So just, I wanted to clarify something. What, what is the change, or what is the thing you think might change the short term?
I think that the permanence, the requirement that the units be affordable forever is, if, if it has not stopped development already, which I believe it has, it will definitely do so in the future, because it impacts whether or not people can get a loan. And if you can't get a loan, and you can't get financing, there will definitely be no project, even if it would pencil out if you could get a loan. And that is the feedback I've gotten, I'm not a financing expert, to be clear. So I guess that's the one part that I would like to see.
But then the units won't be affordable, then you have to continually build forever, and like, there's only so much room.
Well, but if the units don't get built, then they also won't be affordable forever.
Interesting philosophical discussion, for later.
I think I'm still processing what I think about all of this. I mean, this is a, a tool, it's a policy tool, to try to influence private markets to do what we would like them to do, or induce them to do what we would like them to do. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. The points we made several times has to pencil. There are financing issues as well. When we're looking at things like, I know that the number was like 30% AMI, I don't know how you do that, 60%, very, still very, very difficult. 80%, maybe you're getting close to what's possible to pencil out with the developer making a profit, I don't know. I am interested in hearing the feedback from developers outside the city as well. I, I don't have an answer, I don't know what the right direction is, I need to think about it some more, but I do know that when you try to influence private markets, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes you get unintended consequences as well. So it's been three years, that may be a reasonable amount of time, or may not be, to see action with what we have, given the changing of the markets over those three years. It's a very different market today than it was three years ago. It'll be a different market in three more years. So whether or not we should change it, I don't know. I'm going to think about it for quite a while longer, but those are my thoughts.
I was going to jump in and just add, it's a policy choice, but so is everything. So I got curious last week about our previous comp plans, who was in office when they were done, who's had a say in that. And one of the things that's, that's been interesting to me is this choice to have the growth be focused in certain areas of the city, because that has made the other areas of our city more and more expensive. All we can build there is the kind of housing that is the most expensive to build and buy. So it's all a policy choice, whether we change it or not, so that's something to keep in mind, not changing anything. And I don't just mean with MFT, but like, when we talk about middle housing, or what we can and can't build in different areas, it's all eventually going to come and haunt our children, not to be, but it's, or our grandkids. But yeah, it's, it's, it's all that policy choice, because it, you know, like I said, our parents could buy houses here. My parent, my mom was a, I think she was either a telephone operator, she worked in human resources, at some point she made the switch. Both my parents worked at the phone company forever. My dad went from a security guard to AutoCAD person, that maybe wasn't his real job title, but it, they didn't make a lot of money, and they moved here for the school district, and they could. And we've lost that in Bothell. And when we talk about what makes us special, like, we won't have light rail, unless there's a magical ST4 around the corner that everybody loves and wants to start funding. But we all know what makes Bothell special, and I, I think we've, we've got to find a way to make sure that it can be special for more people, because we're really losing some of that in how we've, I say we, the collective city has acted in the last few decades. So we've got a, we've got a big policy choice, but it's all going to be a policy decision, whatever we do.
I think I will just add that, I think 80% AMI, if it gets housing built, that's a good thing, and it is saving some people from having to leave, so I am, I am there with that. I just don't know how that interacts with our current MFT, and if we want to make changes now, or if we want to wait. The longer we wait, the less housing we are going to have, likely, but just because we change it, doesn't mean it's going to get easier, so I don't, I'm not sure.
I think the specifics around percentages is probably a good discussion to have in the Housing Action Plan, because I think that's sort of the consensus of when we're going to finish up this conversation, and we can talk about it then. And I'd say I largely agree with you. Like, like I said earlier, I'd like to use this as a tool to incentivize development, more so than a tool to guarantee affordable units, because I think that will have a bigger impact on overall affordability in Bothell down the road. So that's a wordy way of saying, I appreciate your comments.
But you have mandates from the state and from the counties, so how are you going to achieve those if you only build 80%?
To my understanding, House Bill 1220 gives you a few different paths to get there, and you can mandate affordable units, or you can zone for a type of housing that commerce considers to be acceptable for that percentage of AMI unit. How'd I do?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'll just reiterate that when it comes to the Housing Action Plan, that we're just going to need to have more tools available to us, and, and to Councilmember Dodd's point about being able to understand how those tools work together. And so I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we need to make any changes to MFT right now, but to Councilmember Kurt's point, we need more tools. And so I'm hoping that will come from the Action Plan.
Let me summarize what I've heard, and then if there, if I get anything wrong, we'll go one more round now, so. First theme that I captured in the discussion tonight, and I've heard it multiple times, is what we don't want to do is inadvertently create more barriers to block housing now. So let's not create a policy choice that could potentially make the situation even worse. Got it. Second is, there is general support for current planning efforts to move forward that can help address and get more tools in the toolbox, and, and including, thank you to the Director Greenspan for noting that we have a commitment of bringing back the scope of the Affordable Housing Plan. I really appreciated, too, a little shout out of that notion of, let's learn from the past, of let's, let's not take three years to get to it. And I think having a scope this year will really help so that we continue momentum, and this doesn't get, there's no, no fear of it getting lost, so I appreciate that. Third thing was, I heard a, a general theme too, of we do need to give this some additional time, three years for some things feels like a long time, and then three years, years can be a blink of an eye as well. So giving it more time is, is okay. And then the fourth was absolutely of developer outreach, makes all the sense in the world as we're getting ready for some of these changes, including making sure that we're looking beyond our current set. So let's try and learn from, again, not trying to replicate other communities, but let's hear from people who have developed in other communities to find out what their view of the Bothell environment might look like. So those are the four main things that I captured, and if there's anything else, we can grab it. If not, I think this was really helpful, and really appreciated the dialogue and the conversation, because I do think that these themes are going to come into other topics that we have coming up too. Again, I'll also thank Mike for coming tonight, it was very helpful for us to be able to get to this point, not next year, so thank you.
I did appreciate the deep dive on the charts of what other cities had done, that was really helpful. And I, I may have said that, because I think I was the one who asked for this in February, if I recall correctly, it was a long time ago, and that was exactly what I was hoping to see, so I really appreciate that.
All right, I think with that, we're adjourned.